Good evening. Welcome to the meeting tomorrow. Please rise and join us in a play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, welcome, those in the audience and those viewing us at home. We're going to skip down to item six. It's a, the agenda item is meet with our auditor to review the 2014 financials. And we have the pleasure of Mr. Dick Kinsley to be with us this evening. Welcome. Nice to see you again.
Thanks, Peter. You want me to jump right in?
Sure.
Yes. Thank you for letting us do the audit. We appreciate that. And please feel free, if I'm talking, to ask any questions, interrupt. Anything, I won't feel bad. I think these work better as a conversation than a presentation, so I'm glad to answer any questions. It was all along. First, I want to say that I think your finance team does a really good job here. They, when I look at things, I say there's a big three of accounting, and it's cash, receivables, and debt. And as long as you're reconciling those three, and you're doing it on a monthly basis, and you're doing it on a timely manner, you're going to be okay. You're not going to make any of the big errors or big sins. It also, it's not just so that you get an A from the auditor that you've done it, it's because it means that the information that you're using for your budget and actual reports and your revenue reports are probably going to be accurate information. If you hadn't reconciled cash and you were looking at a budget versus actual expenditure report and a warrant was missing, you could get some misleading information. So, all those things build up to good financial reporting and financial analysis. And I think your team does a good job. There's nothing really big findings in the audit, the management letter. There's two things that I think need to be looked into. One was, there's an unclaimed checks. There's a fund that has $32,000 in an unclaimed check. And I believe it goes back to the Eisenhower property days, and that there was checks that didn't clear on that. Now, it's my understanding that all of those have been resolved, and there still are not any pending out there. And so, if that's the case, then I think that that $32,000 can just close to unreserved, unbalanced, and ultimately to free cash. If not, I think you have to go through the unclaimed checks process. And then you would have to notify people who they've applied to. My thinking is that what happened is, they reserved it as an unclaimed check because people just didn't cash it. They didn't want to, they thought by not cashing that they weren't accepting the terms. And then, when finally the terms did become, they wrote a check out of another account instead of charging these accounts. So, I think that, I think, to my knowledge, we didn't see anything in our legal letter saying that there was anything out there that was still pending. So, I believe that that's just going to close out. The other one is just a small issue that there's a tax foreclosure list. And that tax foreclosure list needs to be updated any time there's a sale of one of those parcels. It's not often, it's just something that we noticed this year that it hadn't been updated whenever something was sold. So, those are the two accounting issues that are, are things that I think need to be looked at. And I also have something in here about investment policy that I'll get to in a minute. But, and then the rest of it is really recent standards set up by the governmental accounting standards board. A lot of them are cosmetic. The first two are cosmetic, and it says that things that used to be reported as assets are liabilities are now going to be deferred inflows or deferred outflows. And it's just the way the financials look. They changed terminology. Something that was net assets is now net positions. And forever, since I went to a county school, it was assets less liability equals fund balances. Well, now it's assets less deferred outflow, plus, I mean, plus deferred outflows, less liabilities and deferred inflows equals your net position. So, there's just cosmetic changes that really don't change anything for you. Except for GASB 68, which is the big one. And what that's going to do, effective June 30th, 2015, is we're going to have to report your unfunded pension liability in the face of your financial statements. And that's what I, the piece of paper I gave you, and the highlighted number is $39 million. And in the past, the unfunded pension liability was, it was only the liability of the entire system, Middlesex regional retirement system, was shown in the back of the financial statements as required supplementary information, and it didn't affect your net assets or net position. And going forward, that $39 million is going to be dropped in as a liability in there. So, it's going to affect your unrestricted net assets by $39 million. It's since the, currently, other post-employment benefits liability, the OPEB liability, is being phased in over a 30-year period. And right now, your financial statements show $14 million of the liability in your financial statements. The true liability is disclosed in the required supplementary information, too. And that's really $67 million. So, the thinking is that shortly after the government accounting standard board 68 kicks in in 2015, that it's the same liability. It's an unfunded pension liability, it's an unfunded OPEB liability. It's different in terms of who gets it and stuff. But, as far as accounting principles goes, they're both unfunded liabilities. And it's my belief that shortly after 2015, then that, they're going to start saying, "We're going to phase this in." They're going to drop that whole $67 million in. So, it's kind of scary to take, to look at your financial statements. There'll be another $90 million worth of liabilities dropped in. But, I really don't think that it's going to have any, that Moody's is going to look at it with bad eyes for a period of time. I mean, they know that the liability exists out there. And they can, when they look at your financial statements, they look at your net assets, and then they go to the back and they say, "Okay, well, you've got to," they do a little math, and they can get to where you would be anyhow. So, it's not, it's not going to surprise Moody's or anything. So, I don't think that they're going to look unfavorably upon it right now. But, when you see your financial statements, you will see, I believe, I believe, another $90 million liability and unrestricted net assets, and it'll push it into the deficit.
Can you explain why it's 90?
Okay, because...
We see 39 here.
You have 39.
We heard 67.
You had 67, but you were already reporting 14 of it. So, there's another 53 that was supposed to be...
Why wouldn't the 14 be included in the 39 or the 67?
The 14 is included in the 67. So, there's another 53. I'm saying that if they decide that there's no more phase in...
You subtract that out, but adding the 39.
Yeah. So, 53 in the 39, so it's 92 more that will eventually be dropped in, I believe.
And then it becomes relative. In relation to other communities who are getting raised.
That's exactly right.
Where we stand.
That's exactly right. So, I don't...
Do we have any idea where we stand, other than everybody's, other than a handful? Small number of communities in Massachusetts are really in good shape.
As far as funding the liability?
Right.
Yeah, there's a few that are doing it. And the ones that I typically see that are doing it are the ones that have regional schools. And it's because they don't, the regional schools are not funding it. They're regional schools. But, the town is, because they don't have, the teachers in the school has such a big number of employees in most places and represents such a big part of the liability, that they can't fund it. So, a lot of the ones, except for the very, very wealthy towns, it's the small towns that don't, that have regional school systems that are doing it. So, I think that you did start, you put 150 into it. And you know, a lot of places are really trying to deal with it by plan design. Because if you put $150,000 in, it really, you know, doesn't do much. But, then some, I was at a place recently, and they said the same thing. "We're not putting anything in, we can't do anything about it." But then they did a plan design, and they dropped their liability $6 million. So, in things you can't fund, and I'm not suggesting that you have a bad plan, I'm just saying that that's what is an option out there.
Just sitting here, I don't know that we have a good comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
I don't mind admitting that.
Yeah.
And again, we've been talking about this for years. And 20, 25 years ago, I was talking about federal pension liability. It was an issue, good, that long ago.
Yep.
But the pressure wasn't on, because so long as you had people in the system...
That's right.
People are going to pay, and pay in.
Right.
And now as you have fewer, fewer career employees, and a pension form comes through the way that's being proposed, you'll need to have even fewer people in the current system paying for people that aren't retired, paying for the ones that are retired. Then we're really going to get caught short.
There is a funding plan in place, though, for Middlesex. I mean, I think it's 2034, so while you're paying, while your assessment, while you're paying for the current retirees' checks, you're also paying for the unfunded liability. And if they don't bump it out again, then by 2034, I think that's where it's supposed to be fully funded.
Right, which is not necessarily on track.
No.
Right.
It started at 2026, I think, and they pushed it.
Well, they keep pushing it, yeah, make it work. Because so long as there are people working, there are people paying it to the system, and it's going to get you through it.
Right.
Until at some point.
It's kind of a Ponzi scheme, isn't it?
It is.
Well, that's, you know what?
But from a local standpoint, again, we're being assessed through Middlesex County to help fund the pension liability. We may get tagged with it not being enough. So, are there any other communities that you're seeing doing something different or better?
Nobody is doing anything different for the retirement system. They're all just funding, they're paying what their assessment is because they're saying, "Okay, Middlesex has the funding plan in place." And so, I don't know if anybody would be saying, "Okay, we're going to pay our retirement assessment and put money away," you know, "to do that, to do..."
Because are we allowed, are we allowed to pay our portion of the liability sooner rather than later?
I know you can when you have your own pension system. Some places have their own pension systems. You know, I can tell you that, I think that probably the likelihood would be yes. Because right now, their actuarial reports, which used to just be entity-wide, now that's, this is, this comes from their actuarial report, and it's showing the contributions by members. And so, it would just, they would just keep track of your planned assets as you, if you contributed more than your assessment. So, my guess is yes, but I can't say it with 100%.
So, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, for dominating here. At what point do you think we need to be in a position to make a decision? It's somewhat reactionary, but a decision that we have to commit more of our annual resources, revenue resources, to this?
Well, I would say that the retirement, I think that everybody's happy that you're on a funding plan. I mean, Moody's is saying, "Okay, it's a funding plan." They're not worried about that. It's the OPEB, and the OPEB is larger than the retirement. So, I can't tell you, I mean, it's that, I can tell you that you're going to be compared with similar people. And like, I think you're in AA, AA2. And so, they're going to start looking, comparing you to other ones that are the same. And if they start funding and putting money aside for, and you're not, then you're not going to look the same as them anymore. So, I think that, you know, doing something, which is what you're doing, is, if you put 150, it shows, I have three types of clients. I have one, that's like I said, the regionals, that don't have the regional schools, that are funded. I have others that are doing nothing. They're just, you know, pretending it doesn't exist because it's such a big number. And then I have others that are doing something. And I just think that it's good for you to be in the group that's doing something. Because it means that you're acknowledging the liability, and that Moody's looks at it and says, "Okay, you know, everybody's having trouble with this, but at least they're not ignoring it." So, I think that what you did when you put in 150, that was a good thing. And I think that, you know, that's something that, it's something that I think that you should try to grow. Which also, can I jump off to something else, or is it, yep?
I have, I have a question. With respect to, Mr. Chairman, with respect to the retired participants and beneficiaries portion of... What you're implied is that the annual assessment we get from the retirement board includes a makeup, so that it's fully funded at the end of whatever period they've set their plan to.
Yeah.
So, our real exposure is the OPEB, right?
Yes, yes. The retirement assessment that you have now is really like four parts. It's to pay the retirees the actual checks.
Yeah.
Again, your share of it. It's to pay for the retirees' unfunded liability. It's to pay for the current employees' unfunded liability. And there's a piece in there so that you would be funding them currently. So that, so that, you know, you'd stop the bleeding, that's...
Yeah.
And I know that we talked before about this, is that a lot of people say that the current employees who are paying 7 plus 2, or 9 plus 2, are more than funding themselves. So that there is no problem with the retirement system right now for the current employees. It's mostly a historical problem. Now, that's not the same thing for the retirees' health insurance, but...
And there was an investment mess there quite a while ago, too, which created some of this problem.
Yeah, yeah. The only reason I was going to talk about the same thing, but what I was going to say is, one of the things I was talking about later is an investment policy. And that's one of the things, right now, your investments, you have an investment firm managing your trust funds and your OPEB. Now, there's only 150,000 in your OPEB, but it's, you know, your investments are in very, what I would term, very conservative investments. There's a significant amount that's in CDs. And so, I think that maybe that's, that the board should get involved with an investment policy that, for the long-term assets that you're going to invest. OPEB is going to be, you're going to be funding that for a long time. And if you're only earning CD rates, it's not going to do anything. And though, but there's a, it puts treasurers in a tough spot to try to put things into even a more moderate-risk investment, if they're doing it on their own. Because if something loses money, which moderate-risk investment can lose, too, they're afraid of the impact that will have on them. And so, a lot of treasurers are very conservative with their investments. But that's why I think it's a good idea to have an investment policy that's brought to you by the treasurer and discussed with you, but it's really the board's investment policy and where you determine the risk tolerance, what you think your risk tolerance should be. And so that the treasurer has a direction from the board as to how risky they want to be with trust funds. And maybe you can have a different risk tolerance for the OPEB money. And the, your general money is limited anyhow. So, you don't, you can't invest that in anything that's high-risk anyhow. So, that's, that is very limited in nature. But it's your trust funds and your OPEB money that you really have a little more flexibility on. And I think that it's something that you should consider, how, what your risk tolerance should be on that.
What do you see in other communities, though?
Well, most of you have not seen much of anything yet. No, I do. I can tell you, with the trust funds and the OPEB, most of them are in a little more aggressive approach than you guys are right now. You got, you're in a very, you know, a good percentage of yours are in CDs. You do have some mutual funds and some government bonds, but it's a percentage of it, you know. So, I mean, I spoke to somebody in the town at one point, and it was when other of my communities had lost 25% of their trust, and you had lost like 1 and 1/2. And they were shocked that you lost 1 and 1/2. But if, they got their 25% back, you got, you know, but you kept growing. But, so, but you weren't, I mean, so you weren't subject to the risk of losing any money, but, or much. And, but, it's just, I guess, I just think that if you got long-term money, like the OPEB, you might want to at least address that a little differently, especially if you plan to grow it. Also, what that does, too, is when the actuary uses a discount rate or an interest rate for your earnings, they use what you're currently earning or what you project to earn. So, right now, I think they used 4%. Whereas the middlesex, because of their vast array of investments, they are using 8% on theirs. So, that would drop the liability if they could use a discount rate of 8%. It would do something else to help you a little. That, I mean, it would probably drop your liability. If they could raise a percent, raise it 1%, it would probably drop your liability $1 million, some, or more.
Just to go back to what you're saying, is I'm on the time of affirmative area, and they're doing the same thing, the 8%, and it has dropped a little. And they are, we're not part of a prem either. We self-invest.
Yeah. Well, that's another thing. That's the only reason you can get into the prem right now, too, and have them do your investment. So, you could just hand the money to them, and that gives you a considerable number of different investment vehicles. So, that's another option, too. But since the management letter is not any good, I did, there were a couple of things I just wanted to address in a couple of minutes. When the town began considering the school project, the board became increasingly involved and concerned with establishing and maintaining reserves. And I think that it was a result of that concern that you got to maintain your bond rating a couple of years ago. And you've still maintained your reserves. If you look at what, you use them, but then you replenish them in your budget, Terry. So, if you look at what Moody's, and I looked at their rating analysis, and that was one of the things they said, is that you have, you have good reserves, you use it, but you're conservative in your budget estimates and replace it. So, by saving that, by maintaining your bond rating, which I believe, there's a chance that it might go up even in the next year, because the criteria for different categories has changed, and a couple of my communities have gone up. Just, they hadn't done anything but, but the criteria changed. So, have they done anything with that? Does anybody contact you? So, it's possible that the next time you do a borrowing, that they might, your bond rating might go up a tad.
We just did a borrow.
The 50 million?
The additional funding for the school.
Oh, you did the other one?
Eighteen million.
Okay. Okay. Because a couple of mine went up. But maintaining your bond rating, I think, and it's keeping those reserves, is so important. When you did your $50 million borrowing, if you had, if your bond rating had decreased even, even one, you could have, you could have paid an extra half a percent on interest. And a half a percent on $50 million over 25 years is like $3.5 million, $3.2 million. So, that's a big number. And nowadays, I kind of think that maintaining a bond rating is a form of taxpayer relief. Because had you, had you bought, not, had you lost your bond rating, you didn't have those reserves on hand, then you would have probably paid more, you definitely would have paid more interest. And the, that would not have affected your ability to manage the town, because it was a debt exclusion. All it would have done is cost the taxpayers...
Pleasure, thank you.
All it would have done is cost the taxpayers more money. It would have cost them $3 million more in money, or even if it was only a quarter, a million and six. So, that, in my belief, that good bond ratings is a form of taxpayer relief. So, sometimes people say you have too much free cash on hand, and, you know, you've had about $1 million worth of free cash or more over the last few, several years. And by having that, I believe that that's what saved you $3 million in building up your stabilization funds. Oh, you know, one of the other things I wanted to mention is, I see some innovative things in some of my different clients. And one of them was on how they're funding their OPEB liability and what they're doing. And one of my towns is doing is, every time an employee changes a position, they're costing that person out. So, they're saying, "Okay, the cost of the person for the position is $50,000." And then they have an actuarial table that says to people in certain age groups how much they would need to put away that year to fully fund that person. And so, they're saying, "Okay, if it's $50,000, and at this age group, we need to put $2,000 away." They're appropriating $52,000. And they're keeping that $2,000 in the budget to go towards OPEB every year. So, what, in their minds, what they can actually do is go to the Moody's and say, "We have a plan, and we have theoretically stopped the bleeding." Because every time, it's not new positions. It's every time there's a turnover in a position, they're putting that money away. And they can, they can look Moody's in the eye and say, "We have stopped the bleeding for employees every time they change, because we're going to fund them on an ongoing basis." Now, it costs money, and any money you spend on that is taken away from someplace else. But I thought it was a pretty innovative idea to, on a way to do something to fund the OPEB liability.
If you can get the model for us, that'd be good.
All right.
I just think it's, I guess you stop the bleeding, stem the tide.
Yeah, yeah.
And otherwise, we're just compounding it.
Right, and putting it off. And the only other thing I really had is that, I noticed that you have, still have a loan authorization of $57 million on, and I know that you didn't want to rescind it at the last time. But I think the sooner you rescind it, the better off you are. Because when, when they look at your bond rating, and when they're looking at you, they look at what you have for debt and what you have the potential for debt. And so, the sooner you can rescind a loan authorization, the better off you are, I think.
Liz, that's related to the fact that we, the town, need to approve the authorization for the whole school?
Correct, yes. And we had discussion, we had discussion in financial planning that we would wait until the school was complete to do that.
In your opinion?
Well, I just think that the longer, every time you set up, put out a financial statement with $57 million on there, they're going to look at it. Unless, I mean, unless you explain it to them, "Well, we're just holding that open." But they still look at it and say, you know, like a credit card company would say, "Hey, if somebody's looking at credit cards, you may not have that much outstanding in credit cards, but you've got a limit. And your limit is $57 million more. So, you have the authority to go out and borrow that $57."
Can we limit that, can we rescind a portion?
Yeah, that's what I was, you know, so wondering.
Can we limit ourselves to this, as far as, you know, we rescind 20 million of it?
That's what I suggested, but...
That was a good idea.
Can you do that?
Today.
I don't even know if you can do that, because the loan authorization was one amount. It was one vote. So, I don't know. I mean...
Well, I mean, with, the loan authorization was for the entire $17 million, right?
Yeah, you probably can.
So, we borrowed 50, which turned into 55 because of the...
We talked about it, we, you said that we could at least do the MSBA reimbursements that we've received.
Right, yeah. As you said that, I mean, I, I think that was my first take on it. But I think, as you just said it, I said, "Well, you're rescinding a vote." Because usually you just rescind the balance when it's done. And you're rescinding one day, you know, the vote was for 100,000, 50,000. So, I mean, my guess is you probably can, but, and if you can, that would be a good idea to rescind it down for whatever you've received already from the MSBA. And that was, I believe, what we did talk about.
Okay, so, someone's going to look into whether we can or should, Liz?
We need to discuss that. So, we can reduce the authorization to borrow of the amount that we've received in MSBA reimbursement, if that is the choice of the board.
If it's going to enhance our bond rating...
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I can't say all his...
Well, the project is going to be done soon, so we can then rescind the whole...
Two years, but a year and a half.
Right, right.
A little longer, no?
Whatever the choice is, you know, I can prepare a figure, and we can get it on the warrant for June or October, or whatever is preferred.
Why don't we plan, it always seemed to me, why don't we plan on doing that in October? And by then, we'll be further along, and therefore, the amount that we're rescinding is bigger.
And when do we get looked at again?
We won't be doing another bond rating call until November or December, after October town meeting.
So, that's a good, right. So, the timing is fine.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
But that means it'll be on the financial statements the next year. You'll just have to explain that it's been rescinded since.
Unless we do it in June. And the other thing is, is, you know, based upon the anticipated reimbursements from the state, you could rescind more than what's actually been reimbursed.
I wouldn't do that.
I wouldn't do that either. That's taking a risk.
That is taking a risk.
How much of a risk? When have they rescinded? When was the last time they haven't made a community call?
I'm not willing to take that risk, Tom.
When was the last time?
Couple of years.
They have done it. They have like reduced it by like 10% of what, you know, one of your contract payments. They've reduced it by 10%.
In years past, remember, they had a, before the changeover in the school funding? They, you would be granted, and then you wouldn't get paid for three or four years.
Look at where we are in the process. When they revised it, it wasn't that far back.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's going to be a little ways down the road before things get messed up again at the state level. But they fall into that position that they were before. We're in the timeframe where, you know, if we can... We're in the timeframe where, you know, if we can do it for June so that our financial statements show a better picture and we don't have to explain anything, why not?
With this being not just a town meeting vote of capital and an authorization to borrow, I don't suggest that we do that for this project.
We just went out to borrow again and it had no impact, negative impact on us.
Wasn't even mentioned.
I wouldn't do anything till October. As of last night, we had received about twenty-two million dollars in reimbursement in the state. By October, I would imagine that's maybe.
Close to double.
Close to double.
Right.
I think that's the opportune time to reduce it by whatever that reimbursement amount is as of October. And we can show it when we go out for the borrowing in November.
Correct.
You know, it may not show on this financial statement, but we'll have the backup to show.
It wasn't even mentioned at the, they know the project's ongoing, so, and that's why we were there to, to borrow additional funds, so that wasn't even something that they mentioned.
And just, you know, just two quick things. If you look in the bond rating analysis, they have two, they have something here that says two quick things, like what could make the bond rating go up and what could make the bond rating go down. And for what could make the bond rating go up, it says significant and sustained balance of financial operations with increasing reserve levels and experience in the tax base and improved demographic profile. So, I mean, some of that you have control over and some you don't. And yet, what could make it go down, it would be inability to obtain structural financial balance resulting in, in dry down of reserves and significant increases in debt levels. So, I mean, you know, it's, it's, right now, it's about what you have out there for debt and what you have for reserves. That's what, in the, in the short term, I mean, that, that could affect you. I think when they do this analysis, they think, this is what could affect us in the next two years.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I think you're in a good place right now. I mean, you, you, your free cash and your stabilization fund and your capital stabilization fund, I think, you know, I think that you're in a good place with the percentage of your budget that they, they represent, so. I probably will have, if anybody has any questions.
Any further questions, Mr. Webster? Finance committee, hey, see, Mr. Keller has a question.
Hi, just curious, the, the OPEB liability at sixty-seven million. The last time we, that I remember we got a report on it, was somewhere around thirty-seven million.
Yes.
Has, has there been a change in the actuarial assumptions? I mean, the, 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 the town hasn't changed that much, so.
No, I think that what we found out was that there was, there were definitely, most of my towns went up not like that. Because there were, there were some new mortality tables and people in the room. But I believe that there was an issue with the census data.
Yes.
And, and that's what, that's what caused it, the census data that was used in the prior report was inaccurate. Is that, that's the biggest concern, right?
The number of employees, that was the biggest driver.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Pretty significant difference.
We didn't have all of our.
We had a higher number of employees identified back in two thousand and ten and before.
Fewer, no, fewer, fewer employees identified.
Had to be fewer, otherwise why would it have gone up?
Now we have more employees, the census went up, and otherwise I.
No. Didn't we have seven hundred and fifty-five for the prior? If, if my computer was working, I could open the report, but.
Yeah, more we have now, we have less today, so your liability's going to go up.
The census was off because it was understated.
Well, except your exposure is less.
I think, yeah, I think that they were, I think it might have been the other way because I, even though it doesn't sound right, because I think that they allocate the unfunded over more people or something.
More people paying in.
Yeah, something like that. Yeah, it was higher before, it was a thousand fifty-eight before, and it's seven fifty-seven now.
So we're seven fifty-seven at a higher rate as opposed to a thousand.
Yeah.
So it's also plan changes, too, with the, the last amount.
Which was supposed to have brought things down.
But it, but then the offset of the assumption of the number of employees, there, there was other components that went into the assumption change.
I think, I think that even in the actuarial report, there's a, there's a piece in there that says key, key reasons for the changes. And I believe, I don't, I don't have it with me right now, but I know.
It's right here, so these are the, the key components. One was this excise tax of six point five million. The democrat, demographic assumption changes was almost one point two million. The participant rate change was eight point eight million.
Yeah.
What do you mean by rate change, Liz?
The participation rate change, which is the amount of employees.
I think what, I think what they, what that might mean is that they set like a participation rate, they say how many, what percentage of your current, current people are going to participate in the OPEB health insurance. And they didn't say, most of the time it's going to be a hundred percent, you know, of them are going to, are going to have that, the members are going to join. And as long as they get their ten years in, but they might have used a lower percentage. To be honest with you, I don't, I don't get into the actuarial reports that much. I mean, I read them, I look, when I say, when I see that big change, we talk about why that change happens, but I kind of leave that to the actuaries. And I haven't liked, I've never delved into it that deeply.
We're also using a different company that is very familiar with municipalities. The previous company that had been contracted prior to my arrival is based out of Rhode Island and does not do many municipal government actuarial studies. So there's different assumptions that, that they make.
But who double checks our consultants?
We do.
They, they, they're supposed to look, you guys are supposed to look at why it went from others, and they give you a list of the reasons why. And, and, you, just, just to make, I don't know if it'll make you feel better because it's still, it ends up where it is, but what I did is I looked at two of my other clients recently and said, okay, because you went so, so much, up so much, I said, okay, let's look at my, and I said, I took their number, they had five hundred employees, and I did a per, per person one, and, and when I multiplied it times yours, it came to like sixty-two million for one of them, and you have sixty-seven, so. I mean, it, the, the other number was just, in my, my view now, it was just low, you know, so. But every place I go, it's, it's different because, because they have different plan design. You know, someplace has pays seventy-five percent for retirees' health insurance and, and others pay fifty percent. I had, I had one place that, that had a very high number, and, and they just happened to have, their, their population was an older population and that, but there were, there were a lot of people at retirement age and that retired at a young retirement age. And so it's just, there's all these different assumptions that go into it and to come out with it. And they, because they, they were having trouble comparing themselves to someone that was very similar to them, and that's what the, the final take on it was.
Is there any benefit to hire a consultant to come in and do a different, you know, do an assessment on us with certain assumptions? I mean, other than, you know, to me, it's, it's this number that's out here.
It is.
You're never going to hit.
It absolutely is.
You're never going to fully fund. It doesn't really mean something other than from a bond rating standpoint, you know, and is there a benefit to coming in, hiring someone to come in, really look at it and get it?
Well, that's theoretically what the actuary is doing.
I know.
You know, they're really looking at it.
But it's all over the board.
Right, well.
Who's doing?
I think you'll be more, you'll be more consistent if they, when they use the similar assumptions and, and similarly.
Right, I can't speak for the past, you know, I'm looking at a table of the differences, and this is what I was speaking to, that, you know, the number of active members for period ending July one, twenty twelve, this is calendar year, was four hundred and ninety-nine active members. For period ending July one, twenty-ten was seven hundred and fifty-five active members. They also, back in twenty-ten, had no available data on covered spouses of retired members. So I don't know what the, you know, preparation was, but with, with this new company that we have contracted with, they, we had a conference call, they then came in and reviewed the actuarial study, went through all the assumptions and the changes in the assumptions. So a lot of work was put into, to the data, and I feel confident that the data that was submitted is accurate. We, we, we spent lots of time with HR and speaking with middlesex retirement and going through all the lists, so going forward, I think we'll have it right.
I, I do a lot of work with this actuary, she seems to be doing, do a lot of my clients in, and, and I know that she swallowed hard when she had to present you with that number, you know, because she, she, she knew it was a big, a big number, you know, but, and so she kept looking at it to see, and, but it was, it was, she identified throughout the report all the reasons why the, why the number went up.
Right. And I was under the impression that you had already received it, so I'll make sure that everybody gets a copy.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number seven, change of manager, Great American Tavern. Please come up and identify yourself.
I'm Deborah Rivera.
Deborah, nice to see you.
Same here, thank you.
I only have a concern about Great American Tavern, and it seems like every three months we're seeing a new manager come through the door. Hopefully you're here, Dick, have a good night. Hopefully you're here to stay for a while.
I am.
All right.
I definitely am.
Just gives me a little concern, we don't see this.
No, I know, I know. I think a lot of it has to do with, you know, the owners being absent owners, if you will, and just some bad decisions made.
You may be gone tomorrow.
No, I'm not going anywhere, I'm there for a while, so.
All right. You want to tell us a little bit about yourself and your background?
Um, I've been in the business about thirty-four years. I've owned restaurants, I've been managing restaurants, director of food and beverage, I run hotels, so it's definitely in my blood. And hopefully we can make a difference and turn the place around.
No, other than I maybe had hoped to have a representative of the ownership here to maybe answer our, because I'd say, as the chairman pointed out, relation to the frequency and change of manager, and I've been sitting here a long time, and we don't see it.
Yeah.
And again, I understand they need to get the establishment going and up going and make sure it's operating properly, and sometimes it's necessary to make changes, but it's unusual.
No, absolutely, you're absolutely right. I mean, they promoted people that didn't actually know what they were doing. They took servers and bartenders and promoted them into management, and it just absolutely wasn't the right thing. I've, I was with regional vice president for Petuchis for like nine years. I've been with Panera, I've been with hotels like the Red Carpet, Holiday Inn.
And how did they find you?
I found them.
You found them.
I found them, yeah. And, and so I interviewed with them, and, you know, they, they knew they were in trouble. And the manager that they had in place prior to me, he used to work for me at Petuchis, and he was let go, I let him go. And so I knew it was definitely a bad egg, and I knew the kind of person that he was, so I kind of had the scope of, you know, what they were going through. So we're, we're turning it around, I've been there now almost two months, and it's definitely turning around, and I'm looking forward to hopefully opening like four more with them, so. That's the plan. So I'm here to stay, and I do know what I'm doing.
You said at least four times, we're going to turn things around and things are bad and all that. Those are kind of buzzwords to me, and I'm a little concerned that, I mean, I don't, business-wise, it's not our business, but how, you're making it sound like things are grim there.
Well, I mean, in terms of staffing, yes. In terms of just the way the place is run, yes. I mean, that's evident by the turnover, you know, that's evident by the management turnover. I mean, I'm the fourth GM in three years, you know? So when I say turn things around, I'm saying clean house in terms of the rest of the staff, put policies and procedures in place and, and make it what it should be, you know? And move, you know, it just, it was more of a employees running the restaurant as opposed to the managers running the restaurant, you know? So very loose, very loose in terms of how things were being handled and how things were running and stuff like that. And, I mean, you can look and see the number of complaints that they had and just different things like that, and, you know, the kitchen's been turned around now, the gas has been turned around, bless you, it's true. So we're in good shape right now moving forward.
I, I mean, I commend you for standing there and telling us all this, and, you know, only because, you know, no, no business owner wants to hear it, but, but kudos to you for, for saying it.
I mean, it's, it's obvious, you know, it's had some growing pains.
I guess my only comment is that the people who are the owners are not due to this business either.
They are, they absolutely are.
Well, they established as a Woburn, where else?
No. The gentleman who was, he actually sold out, he's not the restaurant, open.
Right.
Yes, he, he'd never even finished the building out, it was still a shell, when Brian and Chuck took it over. And Brian and Chuck obviously are CJM Construction, so they're construction guys for the past twenty-five years.
They're not restaurant people.
And that's kind of, you know, they're learning, I'm teaching them as we go.
I had two questions.
Yeah.
First one's in your background. Your resume seems like the last five months, you really weren't doing anything, so is this?
No, I have been, straight through.
Okay.
I was at Panera.
Okay, because it says here you ended, you ended there in November two thousand and thirteen, so I was just wondering why.
I left there at the end of November two thousand and thirteen, took the Christmas, you know.
Okay, so you've been with, with the tavern since November?
Since January.
Since January.
Since January, yeah, mm-hmm. I was off from, after Thanksgiving, from Thanksgiving through Christmas. I went to Florida to visit my parents and then came back.
I just wasn't sure what the break was.
Yeah, no.
Is there an assistant manager or multiple assistant managers?
There's two.
There's two?
Yes.
Has it always been that way?
I can't answer for always, but I think, I think so. I think there's always been some kind of somebody, whether it was a bartender.
How long has that tenure been? Have they been, have they been longstanding, or has there been, has there been turnover in that position?
Turnover, too. One has been there for like two and a half years, and she's currently gone, and the other one was there about a year, and he's also gone. So right now it's brand new.
Well, I'm going to echo kind of what some of the other board members have said. I definitely have concern with the amount of turnover, how quickly, and if there is another one, I think there is going to be a serious problem, and I would ask you to pass it on to the ownership that in the future, if there's any more change, they need to come here. Because I know I'm going to vote no if I don't ever see them, if I don't see them again.
Okay, sure, absolutely.
But then again, that's not your concern. If there's a turnover, you won't be there. I would ask you to pass that on to them.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I'm not, I'm, I'm there to stay, I'm there to stay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I would just like to echo that, I, I.
I'm shocked.
I would like to have had some honor representation here this evening.
Okay.
And again, you can actually speak for themselves and.
I will, absolutely.
I feel good about, and I intend on supporting the change of manager.
Thank you, but I will absolutely pass that on.
Please pass it on.
Absolutely.
That being said, we felt good about the three prior to you, too.
Oh, come on.
No, that's not, that's not a reflection of you.
Oh, all right.
I guess us. I was going to point.
Thanks for playing that out, Joe.
We're not that good at judging characters.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the change of manager for the all alcohol commercial license for Great American Tavern, three oh three Main Street, from Mark Normandin to Deborah Rivera.
Second.
And I have a second. Any further discussion?
One other question. You mentioned that you're hoping to open another three or four with them. Your hours of presence there on site will be how much?
Currently, what am I doing currently?
How much?
Um, about seventy-ish.
That's it? Going seventy hours?
It was ninety, so it's gone better.
Okay, but as they expand.
I will oversee them.
Okay.
As I, as we grow, and so like I'm training one of my assistants right now to step into the GM role.
And your tips trained as well?
I'm sorry?
Tips trained?
Yes. Tips, choke saver, I've got it all.
No, it's good that they have two, two assistant managers, because I, that's why I asked the question. the question. I had that same concern. So, it's good that you have two.
Yeah, we have two assistants and actually I just promoted a shift supervisor. So, there's two full-time managers and a part-time shift right now.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, we're going to go to item eight, our APM public hearing, Golf Facilities Management, DBA Hillview Snacks Bar, application for wine and malt beverage license. Mr. Foye, I believe you have a public hearing notice?
Yes. Notice public hearing. In accordance with chapter one thirty-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen in room fourteen, Town Hall, two thirty-five North Street, on Wednesday, April ninth, two thousand and fourteen, at eight PM, on the application of Golf Facilities Management Inc., DBA Hillview Snack Bar for wine and malt beverage license. License to be exercised at one forty-nine North Street, North Running, Massachusetts, located on the lower level of the Golf Pro Shop and has a takeout window with outside seating.
Welcome, Mr. Carter, Mr. Bursey.
Welcome, gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name's Chris Carter. I'm the head golf professional at Hillview Golf Course. I've been there for sixteen years. I'm also the co-owner of Golf Facilities Management, along with Steve Murphy. We've been the management company at Hillview Golf Course since nineteen eighty-eight and we're here tonight to apply for a seasonal beer and wine license for Hillview Snacks, operating out of the Hillview Golf Shop building.
Chris, can you explain what you intend to do? How's it going to be set up? What is your plan?
The plan at this point would be to sell the beer and wine out of the golf shop. I feel that's probably the best situation where it'll be controlled the best with the outside seating being up on the deck where it's all fenced in already on the picking tables. The goal would be for golfers to be able to purchase beer and wine in the golf shop either prior to them seeing off or after the round of golf to come in and sit and have a, you know, cold refreshment, you know, discussing the round of golf. And the plan is really not to be a late-night operation, you know? The goal would be to shut down about sunset, you know, so that would probably vary a little bit during the course of season. You know, this evening would have been around seven o'clock and the height of the season would probably be eight o'clock tops. Obviously being seasonal or seasonal business there, the golf course closes right around Thanksgiving time and reopens about mid-March.
You've been in operation there for several years. Why have you made the decision to come forward and request a license?
Well, last year we noticed the revenue was down a little bit and I think being... we want to be proactive to try to retain some of our customers that we feel might be going on other golf courses to play. Right now, there's not an opportunity to purchase any alcoholic beer or wine after the round of golf. Some of the leagues have definitely, I know, looked elsewhere to play, you know, that may have an operation like, whether it be nineteenth hole or some kind of a snack bar situation where they can get a beer afterwards. Also, I know for a fact some of the customers last year did go elsewhere. It's really not easy to measure that, you know? But, for example, about twelve guys played every Tuesday around one o'clock, played nine holes. And I know they went to another golf course because there wasn't an option to have a cold refreshment afterwards.
Mr. Foye.
Chris, let me say, it's a pleasure seeing you because we know spring's around the corner whenever we see you hanging around. So...
Thank you, Mr. Foye.
Welcome back from a tough winter.
Absolutely.
I see Mr. Lee in the audience. I'm assuming that you've discussed it with him regarding the impacts it could have if you decide to do something and you guys have worked all that out?
Yes, we have.
Is there an intention to put any cover on top of that decking so that depending upon iffy weather or intense sunshine?
Right now, there's plans to put some kind of a small tent or awning, if you will, on a portion of the deck with potential maybe down the road putting more of a permit-style awning. But it's been discussed for some kind of a temporary tent where it would come down, you know, in the winter months. Be, I guess, a temporary tent style to get out of the sun. Obviously, if it was inclement weather, it kind of rained, we could use it for outings as well, checking in the morning. There's been either just people even looking to sit up there, get out of the sun, that don't want to have an alcoholic drink, you know, just to sit up there and just see the view and look out. It's a beautiful view, you know, whether it be in the morning or at sunset as well.
Are you intending on serving food up there?
Well, right now in the Hillview Snack Bar, we sell hot dogs, chicken salad, tuna salad, ham and cheese, turkey and cheese. At this point, I'd probably continue exactly the way I'm doing it. If it leads to, there's a demand possibly, you know, some kind of a grill operation, you know, hamburgers and hot dogs possibly could be served up on the deck. But right now, I don't have plans to do that right now. The snack bar food would be available.
Mr. Bursey.
So, what's the plan for management this, managing this operation?
Mm-hmm.
Staffing certifications, tip certification, etc., etc.
I propose for myself to be the manager. I'm on-site every day. My staff that currently works the golf shop or the snack bar, I have a tip-certified education seminar set up for April twenty-third where my snack bar staff would be tip-certified along with my golf shop staff as well. My golf shop staff currently, you know, my assistant golf pros are twenty-four years old and twenty-one years old. And I have another gentleman who's seventy-five years old that run the golf shop. And my staff in the snack bar are all mostly retirees and they'll be tip-certified as well.
And the alcohol is going to be just beer and wine? So, you're asking for a beer and wine license?
Correct. Yes.
Anything else?
No, I think it's imperative. I think that the impact on the revenue for the golf course, obviously, does an effect. There has been an effect in relation to a new contract and how it's worked out and the decisions that were made. Again, they're affecting leagues and smaller groups of people who normally golf there. And I think, you know, that's the bloodline, the cash cow that we have there at Hillview. And I think in order to help preserve that and maintain it, it's essential that the services are offered because that's what the public, we utilize those services, demand. And you can't do it in one venue, do it in another. Just as it turns out, I spent a dozen years on the Hillview Commission. I was advocating, you know, doing something on that deck years ago when I was in a minority. So, it's finally coming around, which is good. So, I think it's a good proactive move to take and make in order to preserve the revenue stream that we have there and I intend on supporting it. And I'm heartened by the fact that we have had input from council because I recall years ago, as we looked into this, commissioners that were there when I was there, having two licenses at one establishment was an issue. And apparently it's not as big an issue as it was previously and that's a good thing. It's a good thing for Hillview, it's a good thing for everybody. So, I intend on supporting it and I think it's a good proactive move and thank you for taking it.
I concur what Steve said. The other thing I just want to say is, you know, I don't think management's going to be a problem. I mean, we all know that Chris is... we all know Chris personally. We all know Chris is there on a regular basis. And we all know what, how great he's been to the community. So, that's not a concern of ours, as it was with the previous establishment that was here. But we know Chris will do a great job.
Good. Anyone from the public have a question or comment? Sir, you might come up to the podium, just identify your name and address. Mr. Moran?
John Moran, one Hillview Road.
How are you?
The only question I have is this going to morph into a beer cart that's going to be on the course? I have no problem with doing that. It's a good idea. But I just want to know if this is going to be a beer cart that goes on the course now or...
At this point, I have no plans for a beer cart, no.
Just as all of them, would beer be allowed on the course?
At this point, I don't believe it can be. I believe the town has a bylaw that public property, you can't have any alcohol in the golf course.
They're all sneaking them on. Sir?
Ross Henderson, four Hillview Road.
How are you?
Hi. My question, I was under the impression that the beer and wine was going to be out of the bottom place where hot dogs and hamburgers and all things are come. Now it's up on the top, is that correct?
On the deck?
The plan would be to offer outdoor seating. The deck is the most inviting spot because it's the largest location. I wish I had a bigger sitting area in front of the snack bar. At this point, we don't have that. So, I think the best location to offer the alcohol would be in the golf shop behind the counter. I think it's going to be controlled mostly that way.
Okay.
And then easier for people in and out of the golf shop.
Okay. Because I had a problem with it being below. It's just no different than buying a beer and going off in the golf cart and away you go, you know? You have these signs all over the place that says, "No liquor on the course." So, if it's going to be upstairs, I'm controlled from the pro shop, which would...
Anyone else in the audience have a question or a comment? Okay. Do we have a motion or close public hearing?
So, motion or close of public hearing?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
On the motion. Mr. Foye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant a commericial wine and malt beverage license to Golf Facilities Management Inc., DBA Hillview Snack Bar, one forty-nine North Street. Christopher Carter, manager, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion?
Just one more.
Yes.
This is not seasonal. That's what...
No, it's true. It doesn't say seasonal.
And I don't know what kind of an impact that has.
I don't know what that is.
I don't know what that has as far as an impact as to the number of licenses we have available. People might want to have a beer at Christmas time, you know? Again, it gets seasonal, depends upon the weather. So, it's a...
Well, it's March fifteenth.
If you say March fifteenth...
At most, it's March fifteenth to December twenty-fourth.
December twenty-fourth, at most.
Just like with the contract.
Is the seasonal license dictated by state law as far as certain dates? Or is it seasonal based on the business operation?
I don't know. I know that there are seasonal licenses, but I'm fine. I just...
At most, it would be those dates that you mentioned, at most.
Yeah. I'm trying to look on the form. I don't see anywhere on the form where you...
And again, we can revisit it next year. We should put that on the ticker list just to look at as far as whether it affects what we have available in other areas of town. That's a good dump out of town.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Annas, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone here for public comment? Is anyone leaving now?
Not everybody.
Well, there's no hoop games tonight. Hoop's over. All you got.
Anyone here for public comment? I'm going to go to item nine, discuss finance department position of accounting analyst.
The board had requested when finance directors here, budget session, she is opposed, suggested that she needs additional help. The board had asked for a description of the position, which has been provided. So, now she's here to discuss that with us.
So, I put together a list of essential functions that I feel the... that are needs of the town, not just needs of the finance accounting division, but for the town overall. So, based upon those essential functions, some of them have to do with internal control policies. Some of them have to do with checks and balances of those policies. Also, some of the duties that I feel are important would be that this individual would be responsible for reviewing and maintaining contracts for the town. We have the ability to store those electronically in one of the new MUNIS modules that we purchased. So, this individual could be in charge of scanning those and then they could be accessible for all departments or just particular departments that would be in need of this particular type of contract. They would also review quotes and bids prior to purchase orders being processed to make sure that we're in compliance. They also would do other auditing functions and to make sure that, you know, we're not open to any type of fraud. So, they would be incent a internal auditor analyst that would, you know, do anything from looking at a particular department budget and analyzing spending trends to, like I said, contract review and items like that.
Mr. Bursey?
Yeah, but when you read through this list of responsibilities this person would have, a lot of the stuff is already being done. And I think I brought this up. That's why I had asked for this to be considered because I think Liz is doing a lot of it. Some of her staff is doing some of it as well. But I also believe there's a few things on here that are not being done at all, that should be done. When you look at the last two bullets, when I read that, I called Liz and I had asked, you know, "Do you have a policy or procedure in place to do those types of things? It sounds great. I hope we're doing this." And, you know, immediately saw that her department's probably more lax on that area than it should be. And I've always had a little bit of concern about that particular area. So, I think you did a great job capturing this. I'm in full support of it. The question I had really is the funding at the bottom there, the forty-six to fifty. So, would this be similar to an existing position you have now and just adding it? Is that currently...
No, this is an industry trend. Actually, the city of Chelsea is hiring for a financial analyst, I believe, is one of the title. And the range is from forty-two to fifty-two. You know, I looked at other communities that have a similar position and that, you know, is a sound range. Currently in the budget is twenty-five thousand for a consultant, so...
I'm a fan of the employee versus the consultant, but I know there was a lot of talk last time of consulting on these services.
As unfortunately towns unlike cities, the chief executive officer is also the purchasing official, which is ludicrous because he has enough on his plate to do than have to worry about what department had or was putting out specs. And I'm assuming that he's not, not Greg personally, but any town commissioner is not spending a lot of time worrying about how specs are going out and all that. Is there any thought to this person? I know you said contracts, but I'm more concerned about before they get to contracts, how things are being put out, you know, are quotes being accurately done. And I don't accuse you of anything or anything, but it's not a bad idea to have someone who knows that process.
Sure. So, you know, we could, if this goes forward, you know, this was just a template of thoughts that I know are immediate needs. So, we could adjust the bottom two to have, you know, experience within procurement laws in Massachusetts, something like that, that, you know, if they are checking quotes and bids and contracts to match the accounting system for purchase orders, they would have to have some background in that, so...
Do you think there'd be any desire in your part to have that person certified?
I plan on being certified in the fall, you know...
I just don't want to add anything, you know, whether it be you, the town commissioner, it's a process in itself, you know, so I don't want to throw more on you also.
No, I started the classes last fall and the, unfortunately, the classes in June are... No, I started the classes last fall and the, unfortunately, the classes in June are already filled. So I plan on signing up once the fall classes are released. I have two more sections and, but I'm always open for, you know, development. So if that is something, if this position is approved and goes forward, then that can be something that takes place.
Thanks.
Mr. Leder.
I'm more in tune with taking smaller steps here. Again, there's no doubt that there's a need for additional resources, you know, in Liz's area here. But as we talked about the implementation of Munis and we talked at the previous meeting, you know, we were, I thought we were in the mindset of, you're going to give us three different proposals of, I think if you check the minutes, I don't, you have my iPad. We're going to see three different proposals as far as, you know, the cost of, you know, part-time. Again, I'm not looking to bring on a new full-time employee yet when I haven't really embraced the idea that what this person's going to do and how it fits in in relation to everything that's transforming within the finance department. And with that comes benefits and all the rest. So that's where we talked about consultants and that's where we talked about part-time, less than twenty hours. To phase it in and then see as it grows and the needs are more clearly identified as Munis is phased in, we'll have a better idea as to where we're going.
These needs will not go away when Munis is... No, right. And then if you take this profile, this serves the purpose of the three scenarios. It serves the purpose of what a consultant would do. The reason why the piece on the bottom is the salary range is if we chose to go to the full-time position and the consultant then would be a contract and it would be no more than twenty-five thousand with these duties and spread out however the hours get spread out over the course of the year. And a part-time person, you know, probably would be able to cover half of the duties. But these are the duties that need, in my mind, to get done. So whether the part-time person, which personally would not benefit us, we'd have to spend more time getting the person up to speed. So I would prefer a consultant or a full-time person. A consultant, you can get an expert that has experience in these items, doing it for communities. There's many of them out there that are well-versed in Munis and internal controls and procurement laws. So that's how, whatever avenue we go in, this is what the vision is.
To me, if we have some expertise out there for twenty-five thousand dollars and no benefits, you know, which would certainly assist the current staff, that's not a bad first step. And then if it morphs itself into the need, then again, it identifies itself as a full-time need. I mean, we have yourself and we have your assistant, you know, who are assuming what are more routine tasks as opposed to the upper-level tasks. Again, as far as where this position fits in, I mean, it would be in, I would assume like third-in-command.
Right.
A third-in-command. You know, to me, I think I'd like to, because of the transition that's taking place, I'd like to see the transition be a little bit more slow rather than committing to a full-time equivalent with benefits and have to worry about justifying it later on. Again, not that we can't keep them busy, we can always keep people busy. But I'd like to keep them busy with appropriate tasks based upon the pay scale. And, you know, right now what we have is we have high-paid individuals performing tasks that lower-paid people are quite capable of doing. We just don't have the staff to do it.
Correct.
So I guess I haven't fully wrapped myself around or embraced the idea that we have a need for this full-time position until we've actually...
You can look at it both ways.
But I think if we can get an outside consultant for the twenty-five thousand dollars to perform the task that we're looking for and at the same time assist in training the staff in place, I mean, that's extremely valuable. And as you say, if there's a lot of people out there that are familiar with it, then let's take advantage of it.
There's pros and cons to that. You know, the benefit of having a consultant, they're brought up to speed a lot faster than bringing someone in-house. But there's benefits to having an in-house person in regards to relations with employees versus the consultant just coming and going. So sometimes employees don't take on to training from an outside consultant. And I've seen that firsthand with prior Munis training and then in-house training. So there's pros and cons to both.
Mr. Prisco?
Yeah, and that's why I'm really not in favor of the consultant, because I know really well how it works. All right, you will still have to have a lot of on-the-job training, even if you bring consultant. You're going to make a massive investment in an individual. When you consult out the work, you're not hiring an individual, you're hiring a title of a person. That person could be here for three weeks and be gone and another person may be coming in. That's the issue with the consultant. I don't want to see our staff invest the time and the energy that it's going to take to get a person up to speed. I don't care what level they are. There is going to be an investment in that and then potentially continue to see that turn over. I don't think that's a great investment of our money. And this is, yes, I know this is a very significant step, but it's one that's long overdue. I'm not in favor of the consultant.
Personally, I'm in favor of year one for a consultant, but a higher dollar amount than the twenty-five thousand. In my mind, if the budget can support it, I'm in the range of thirty-five to forty, because I think there's a need here and I think you can get value out of that. I don't think twenty-five thousand dollars would a consultant is going to get you much of what you need after reviewing this description. So that's where I am at.
I don't dispute the need. I, thinking in terms of the budget and where we stand and where we are with the budget at this point, how much room is in there for a range of dollars? I mean, it's not in the budget right now, or is it?
Just the twenty-five thousand is in the budget.
So it'd be easy to increase that in terms of a additional consulting hours. More difficult from the point of view of adding an employee with benefits.
Other benefits.
Because you've got the insurance cost and all that to go with it. What, if this, if we had a person on board, right? Could we leverage other department members either to perform additional tasks or even share them with the treasury and collection area?
Yes.
So there would be some benefit there.
And also, you know, my accounts payable person, yes, my assistant and myself can do accounts payable. We could back her up. But, you know, she, because she's the sole person that does accounts payable, feels she has great work ethic and doesn't want to take ever a full week of vacation because of the accounts payable vendor warrant, which is dedication. But, you know, if there was a third person that could back up and she knew that, she knows that our plates are full. So she doesn't, you know, take time off.
How would you go about hiring and fitting the employee that you've described in the budget this year? Would you do it like, start it at the middle of the year so that, or what was your plan?
Well, my plan originally was as proposed, because I was trying to be cautious with the budget. But there, we have some excess capacity in the budget. We have capacity to take care of if there is a potential increase for CPC. And we have capacity to take care of this increase.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leder.
Just Greg's input up to this point was tentative, you know, there's a need, but he wasn't embracing the concept of a full-time employee yet. We're in a transitional period here too, as far as administrators. To me, I think with a new person coming in, there's going to be a new set of eyes looking at our organizational structure. I think, you know, the tasks still need to be done. I think there's an identifiable need. But again, to take on a full-time employee with benefits might not be the right time to do it. And again, let's get the input from the new administrator that comes in. And again, that wasn't the recommendation of Greg at this particular point either, you know, based on his thirty years' experience and being here eight and a half years. So to me, again, I think we properly identified a need. I think we're addressing it to a certain degree, maybe not fully, with what's been proposed. But I'm not in favor at this particular point in time of Greg's input, where we are transitioning with administrators, looking at the organizational chart, taking on a full-time employee with benefits. Yeah, again, may transition to that in a year. And to me, if we have a consultant more than a year, then we have a need for a full-time employee.
And we will have a consultant for more than a year.
That's what I mean. If we have a consultant for more than a year, depending upon what, how many hours that morphs into, then we probably have, we do have an identifiable need, which should be filled by a full-time equivalent, whether it be so many hours, twenty hours or forty hours, thirty-seven and a half hours, thirty-five hours. But let's quantify it first and let's really get it flushed out as to what we're looking to do. And I think with the new administrator coming in, it's a good time to look at it.
I'm going to agree with you in terms of the consultant for year one. I think we'll, you and I just differ in terms of the dollars placed upon that. I think there's a lot that needs to be done and I don't think for twenty-five thousand, you're going to get half of what's on that list to give you the relief that you need and your assistant needs. If there's a way to get thirty-five to forty thousand somehow out of the budget into this position, that's what I'm in favor of.
The finance department has really evolved even since back in November two thousand and eleven when I came on board. Now, you know, finance is in charge of information technology. And for, you know, the IT administrator, it's over a hundred-hour-a-week job. And for myself to be in charge of that too, it puts some of these duties that, you know, I do on the weekends that I could actually, you know, focus on during the week, but I can't. And finance now, you know, has IT under it. So that is something that finance never had before. So there's many duties that have been added to the finance department.
I think it's a benefit for IT to be in the administration, so I would hope that that transition would occur once everything else falls into place. I recognize, I'm talking to you, it's quite the added burden.
Yes.
Anyone else? Rather discuss this topic? Where are we at? Any sort of consensus? I think we're all over the map on it.
Well, I think it's a full-time employee, we have consultant with more money, we have consultant that less than dollars. I don't know what you want to buy.
I fully appreciate the workload and what Liz personally has put in, in terms of the hours. And I think that she's proven to us that her efforts have paid off and that I think we owe her support. I guess I lean toward, you know, if we weren't in this transition period with the town administrator, let's say, you know, and we'd get some direct input from the town administrator. But Greg's leaving and, you know, with him, any issues that exist, they'll leave with him because he's not here. I would, I could fully support bringing consultant on and putting additional money in the, provided, well, either way, I guess we'd have to provide the funding. So, you know, I'd go along more with what Sean is saying. With the idea that Liz would work with a new town administrator and they would come back with a proposal for the next year budget cycle, which would make sense and it had full support on both sides. So that's kind of where I'm at right now. So the number thirty-five, forty thousand dollars makes sense to me. And maybe there's some other ideas, a new town administrator comes in and he wants to make some other changes. It wouldn't restrict them in making those changes. At the same time, I don't want Liz to continue to work the hours that she's working. You know, I think that fairness is fairness. The job is there and you see the workload.
I agree, and people should feel free to take, make it to vacation, you know, your other staff people, which is, you know, again, we're a very dedicated group of people here in Tahoe. And we need to encourage people, they need the break.
Yes, I do encourage it, so.
Yeah, so they need the break. So again, if you're talking thirty-five thousand dollars, I'm good, you know, an extra ten thousand dollars, I'm good. But it's just, you know, to me, let the transition, all the transitions take place here and see how it sorts itself out. And I concur that, you know, come the next budget cycle, I expect to see some sort of a proposal.
Is that workable?
That is, you know, fine with me and, you know, I agree, you know, we can see. And even by having somebody, you know, do the work as a consultant, they, you know, can put together a report of what they see the needs are while they're doing it, so.
Yeah, I can support that. I mean, Liz will should have ordered it, but again, I do see the value in waiting just for a new town administrator to come in to try and figure out how things are going to get rehauled, maybe take IT, you know, maybe take an IT off your plate and back on his. So if you can work with it and everybody's on board, I'm okay with thirty-five.
We're not going yet. I throw in a range.
Forty or thirty-five?
Thirty-five.
Well, let me ask you this, though. Is there any money in the current operating budget to allow her to at least bring this person on before the new fiscal year?
She can answer that better than us, and I don't think so.
Not in my budget, I mean, so, and that's fine. You know, July first is here before we know it. So I don't even have time to put together, you know, a packet of the description and all that by July first, so.
Thirty-five, that works for me.
Thirty-seven, five.
I'm just happy.
Thirty-seven, five. Go with that, we'll split that, how's that? All right?
All right, that sounds good. Thirty-seven, five.
I'm with thirty-five.
Thirty-seven, we have a consensus on thirty-seven, five. I hear Mr. Leder, thirty-five.
I'm with thirty-five.
All right, thirty-seven, five.
Joe, it's up to you.
You don't have to spend it. I want to give you what you may need.
So I'm not coming back at October town meeting and saying...
I don't want the finance committee...
What's happening now?
That's not...
Do you want to weigh in? I mean, you're here.
We think that there's just...
You're not getting up, all right.
I think that we should give as much support to the finance office, particularly the finance director, who more than has her plate full and who makes every effort to accommodate every request and every need of the department heads, the VOS, the incoming, et cetera. So I think that to do anything less than at least try and offer her some assistance is not advisable.
So you agree with the five of us?
I think you should give her at least forty thousand dollars. And I have a problem waiting for the new town administrator to come in. You know, I don't know what kind of a contract you're going to have with a consultant, but I'm going to have to guess that it's, you know, quarterly or month-to-month or whatever. So it's probably possible that if the new town administrator shows up and thinks that at Fall Town Meeting, having a consultant is a bad idea, that you ought to go out and look for a full-time employee and do it then. look for a full-time employee and do it then.
Sure, that's it, so thirty-five should cover it.
Forty should do it.
Thirty-five, ten.
Thirty-seven, five.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-seven, five.
Let's just run it's a number, so we can move on.
I wrote thirty-seven, five down.
The other finance director.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
No, we appreciate all your efforts, I mean, from my perspective, we got very lucky. When I was looking for finance director, and you were there, speaking, I think I could speak to the whole board and say, we're very appreciative of all your efforts, the efforts of the staff.
Thank you.
It's been terrific work.
We have a great team, and everybody puts in more than, you know, what's expected. Thank you.
Liz, before you go.
Yes.
Sean, is it okay if you maybe share with her what came out of the SSBC meeting regarding Liz last night? I think it's important that she hears the statements that were made.
Oh, Mel Webster's the chair just spoke much more glowingly about you than I just did concerning the time and the effort that you've put in, in terms of the project. Did I miss something?
Yeah, you did, completely. But I'll take care if you don't mind.
I thought it was two nights ago.
At the secondary school building committee meeting, Gil Bain actually stood up and sang her praise. And same with MSBA. The process, they've never seen it. Now, Gil Bain's built a lot of schools, and they've said they've never seen the finances managed as well as you've managed. And they wanted to pass along a sincere thank you to you. Your diligence to get through the process, they say, is amazing, they've never seen it before. And their contractors have actually said something to them, how quickly they're getting paid, allows them the ability to put more staff, because they know they're going to get paid.
And the benefit we're getting is because of how quickly they get paid.
Faster reimbursement.
They're coming here, and they're working.
They are, they are, not ahead of schedule, but they caught up.
They're moving this project along.
And a lot of it has to do.
The rate they're getting paid.
When you're not paying, they don't show up. So, I just wanted to make sure you heard that while you were here.
Thank you.
Michael, thank you.
It also goes to my team, too, and my accounts payable person that will not take time out.
You should pass that along.
They won't take a vacation.
Yes, so I will pass it along.
Take a month off after the school building project's done.
She's very diligent, so thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, you're all set, but I left the instructions inside.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I do have a question before you leave. You know, you speak.
The folks in the house, they hear everything.
Nothing? Just came for a quick visit. It's always nice to see both of you.
It was just nosy. A big night out. I tell you, he's not much of a dick.
It's an idea.
This is date night?
Thanks for coming in and joining us.
It was fun, though. It's like a visitor once in a while. Only here, there's.
Keeps us on our toes.
We're actually going to get to the minutes? That's amazing.
We'll get Dick here.
Item ten, and I believe this is what Mr. Count Rowley's here for, to modify existing water restrictions.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening. Dick, you guys did a great job on Marblehead Street. Please pass that along.
Thanks.
It looks like they paid the crowd round.
I didn't have access. Someone told me, I said, I'll do it.
I'll do it.
I didn't, did you send me?
I sent you.
You sent it to me.
When we were done, I said today.
Oh, I didn't, you know what? They switched over our emails. I would have responded to.
Lightly story.
I apologize. I didn't get it.
Sorry. We were not putting a lot of money into Marblehead Street because we could tear it up in about four weeks, to repay it. So, they finally did get it all. So, thank you for that, officer.
You should have received a memo with a justification, the existing rules and regulations and a modification, and electronic copy of the drought management plan. We gave that all to Karen to send you.
We probably have gotten that. I haven't seen that, but everything else we did, I did see.
Yeah, I just think that's actually in the water. We have another section in our draft box, I think that ended up in that particular item.
Long story short, it is part of what I'm going to talk about, they recommend. We get to the details. In two thousand twelve, the Selectment approved water use restrictions for the town, which hadn't been done for a while. I'm looking for a modification based on a couple of factors. A, consultant recommendation. B, we had set it up in a manner where we would say precinct one do it this day, precinct two does it this day. Most people's towns don't know what the precincts are, so changing is like a odd even, to kind of make it more user-friendly for the customer. And Mark tells me that Saturday and Sunday still are our highest uses of water, so having a day for the system to recover is essential. He recommended Monday. So, people generally, no matter what we have restrictions, they're going to use on the weekends, he needs a day to recover. So, we recommend it from any condition, nobody water on a Monday. So, those are three things I'd go for. Looking at some of the background documents, we have an inter basin transfer to get water from Andover, so one point five million gallons a day. As part of that permit from the state, we're supposed to comply with the State Water Resources Commission, those regulations. If you flip through it, it's just kind of highlighted what we're supposed to be doing. This is essentially a regulatory thing. As part of our moving forward with water and sewer, and our ongoing issue with water root season in the summer, I had outside consult, looking at all our data, recommendations, what we're doing right, what we're doing wrong. And one of the recommendations is to make, we now have what they call voluntary odd even throughout the summer, make that a mandatory thing. So, everybody has to do odd even. No restrictions other than the time when you do it, but just to make it mandatory. Just recently, the DEP is publishing draft Water Management Act permit guidance and Water Resource Management Program. We don't have a Water Management Act permit, we gave it up several years ago. We do have a registration. As part of those, as part of the Resource Management Program document, they may be trying to adopt conditions for registrations. So, essentially, the things that were onerous to the town for the Water Management Act, they might try to put that upon us. We have various groups, Mass Water Works Association, consultant groups, working with us to help us with this, but that's a potential. And the second document is the Water Management Act Permit Guidance, and I just printed one section that has the water conservation standards, and it's driven by a lot of things, flow in the upstream river, for example, how many gallons per person per day we use, and how much, unaccounted for, water. Water that we make, we back out our thing, we sell, and we reason, we can say, where to go, and then what's left over. So, these are very specific. For example, there's a table seven. If we are above sixty-five gallons per person per day, and we are some years above it, a lot of years below it, we would go immediately to two days of watering, right off the bat. And if there's a low flow in the river, we go to one day a week. So, it's pretty strict compared to what we have now. So, this may happen, hopefully it won't happen. Communities with a Water Management Act permit that did not abandon it like we did or give it up are squirming, because there's conditions in this new permit that makes them, they have to economically justify why they don't do something. And they think a two percent raise, I forget if it's the water budget or the town budget, is acceptable. They've taken this financially devastating stance, so. So, background, I hope this doesn't affect us, but the Mass Water Works has told us keep an eye on the registration part and keep in contact with all legislative delegation.
So, Dick, what you're saying is the registration was basically the grandfathered amount that we were allowed to take out of the wells at the time they changed the law.
And other than some basic restrictions, and this, this is the existing one, this is a lot tighter. So, they might look to go from A to B.
Now, are these restrictions focused on the Iswitch watershed, or this Massachusetts?
Massachusetts, statewide, all basins.
All basins. So, if we're getting water from MWRA, does that apply?
That's as part of the draft DIR and subsequent negotiations. Not clear, I think not, because they already have an inter basin transfer from wherever they get it from, the Connecticut River Basin, and that would be the vehicle to get water from them to us. And they had told us they would take care of that, negotiating, working with the state.
That's correct. Dick is correct, and when you just said that, it wouldn't apply if you were under a community.
Okay, so, my understanding was, if we go back a long time ago, that in the summer months, somewhere in our books or bylaws, water was supposed to be odd even. And I think that odd even meant odd even sides of the street, based on the date, and that went through Monday to Sunday. So, and of course, when there's plenty of water and there's no issues, no one ever paid attention to it. So, the only time it seems like the town has acted to enforcing that has been when water, you know, on a dry summer, and water is tight, and we start enforcing the odd even. And then, you know, three years ago, whenever we had that issue, that our water tanks were going way down, and Andover abruptly cut us off, you know, and then we had this crisis. So, the odd even, I thought, was on the books. I never heard of this business of different.
Precincts, yeah.
Precincts. I don't know where that came from.
That was always on the records.
That was on the books?
Yes. Actually, in nineteen ninety-one, when we got the Water Inter Basin Transfer Act permit from the state for Andover, we had a mandatory water ban in the summer. I guess I found that documentation from twenty years ago. Somehow, when I arrived, it was a voluntary odd even, and I guess we're just looking to make that a mandatory odd even for the normal conditions before we have any issues. So, that's the only change we're trying to do.
So, that's really your recommendation, but you want to make it six days a week instead of seven.
Correct.
Excluding Monday.
Right, so people would still, when I'm proposing, have the same amount of days to water when you get up to the second stage in the restriction, they get the same amount of days to do it, they just, it's on a days versus a precinct, geographical versus a location.
Well, most people don't know the precinct they're in.
Right. Some communities do. In this community, no one has a clue.
Because they're all in the same place.
They all vote for the church.
That's why. Even before that.
So, just, that's a little administrative thing, it's just, it's difficult to convey a message, hey, we need to do some water restrictions, and you can water these times when people can't figure out where they actually are politically, in voting precinct. So, that part makes it a little user-friendly.
So, how do you, I'm sorry, how do you propose educating the public?
Well, historically, we've taken flyers on the water bill, or a message on the water bill. We're doing that right now. We're changing, by the way, sidetracked, we're updating the solid waste program, we're doing a lot of new things, and we're going from three barrels to two barrels. We just started that process, I sent something to Bob last week.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're trying to get out multiple ways. So, A through bills, B through the print press, the patch, C, get some of those trail mounted sign boards, put them to treat, typically around town, take advantage of all the different, it's not a code red thing, but there are blast distribution things for the town and the school, take advantage of those again, and again, and again. So, that was the plan for the actual education. And third one was, Mark has door tags, so probably make some a little more custom door tags, so if he noticed something, put on a door, hey, we noticed you're doing this, this is what you're supposed to do. So, more of a soft approach.
The town Middleton has, I think it's like a four-level system?
No, they have like a, they have Danvers's system, it's like a six-level one.
A six, well, I've only seen certain levels on the signs, but they look like signs that they're all year round, but when you go by, you'll find that the sign says something different.
They may have to do that. I think they have a sign, and this one in Danvers Square, they have like a, you know, those thermometers when you're raising funds, it's got like a little arrow telling you what, which one you're on, something like that. That would probably be another good idea.
Yeah, Reading Center has that also.
Reading Center?
Yeah.
Yeah, something along that line.
The only problem I see is your Mondays. If you have, if people that have, like myself, who have a sprinkler system, I set it and forget it, like, in a month, right?
And that's going to be the hard part.
I think that's going to be the real challenge.
Right.
Really do.
Well, you need a more sophisticated ass, timer.
That means I got to keep on going down every, shutting it off. That's the issue.
Yeah, unfortunately.
So, I think you're going to have difficulty getting compliance on Mondays.
Well, compliance is the bubble boom. Historically, we'd never shut anybody's water off, we'd never find anybody. The bylaw does allow us to, and those regulations, first violation's a fifty dollar, second is a hundred dollars, and it gives us the provision to shut off water in a case of, during extreme water emergency, and you're still doing the wrong thing. As Joe knows and I know, it's very, very hard to shut somebody's water off. There's always elderly people, people with children, people with medical issues, you name it, sometimes they have it, so it's not a slam dunk.
No, I think the biggest issue is that you educate the town, and you get cooperation, and then there's those outliers that.
Scaffloss.
Scaffloss, right? And because a large percentage of the town is conforming, there's no issue, except that, you know, neighbors get unhappy with neighbors, and they cull the board and say, you know, a guy down the street. It isn't the neighbor necessarily, it's complaining, it's someone who's driving by. I guess just life.
The enforcing officer for this is the police department, unless the police see it, they're not going to take it.
Or unless they've asked.
Some communities, they delegate it to the water department. Here, it's not, so it's a.
So, should we change that?
That would be, I think, going to town meeting.
That's, I mean, is your recommendation that we change that? I think it's crazy that's police, and I'm going to tell you, when, you know, several years ago, when we had the situation with Danvers shut us off.
Right.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
The Andover.
Wow.
You said Danvers.
I don't know why. But when Andover shut us off, you know, people were still, and, you know, when I inquired about it, that's exactly what Mark said. It's, you know, police, and the police have more important things to do than to slap someone on their wrist for using water when they weren't supposed to, so.
So, it's, the only good about it is, it's an officer with a gun in a marked car. We show up in a water truck.
It's like.
Nobody feels it.
We'll give you a gun. We'll give you a gun in a bag.
You don't have one?
All right, we'll deputize you.
Enforcement is always an issue, getting people to comply. However, Nick, it was the two summers ago, two thousand and ten, we had the bad problem. We put a lot of press out and a lot of sign boards everywhere, I think we had seven sign boards, and we did get people, significant amount of people did back off on the water use, so it did kind of make us be able to survive, and the water tanks went back up. So, we did get compliance, you're never going to get everybody to go.
However, the way I look at it, if we want to look at it from a financial point of view, what we want to do is sell.
Sell water.
As much water as we possibly can every year.
Before the crisis.
Because that's where we generate enough money to cover our overhead, and it eliminates the need to raise the water rates, because we have so little enough water. So.
Fortune's a double exhorter.
I kind of like the, I kind of like the idea of, yeah, it's in the bylaw, and only when we have a dry spell and we need to do something, we do it.
If you look at, this is one of the key charts from what I gave you guys. Basically, we drive to starting to water use, and we go to one point five line, which is that line right there. That's what we have. So, this is part of what they did, is total water demand, Andover use. And historically, this is kind of massive when we have trouble. When we get above the line of the Andover water, that's when we get into trouble. And this is a tank.
But it's going to get worse, as far as the cost.
Two thousand and eleven, you know, this is the water tank levels came up, dropped down. So, from a selling water standpoint, selling water to make money standpoint, usually that little bump above the line is what I'm worried about, all this other steady revenue, steady use. It doesn't make a huge difference, I think.
If we were, if we can draw a million gallons a day from our wells, right, and our usage is a million gallons, do we get water from Andover? Of course we do, because, you know, the system is, you know, doesn't, Andover doesn't kick in when we get to that level. Andover's online, and it depends on the flows.
Well, you have a gate, and you can shut off.
Right, it's driven by use. Once the use goes up.
Right.
The thing kicks in. Problem is our system, we rely, if we can generate point six to point eight million gallons a day, and we can actually do it like a million. So, the condition of the existing system is such that we cannot get that water out, so we have to get it manned over. As part of the capital. As part of the capital, FY15 CIP, they wanted us to study to look at some of the treatment plants, figure why can't we get the water through the plant? Start to figure out if we can get more throughput through our system, it's less we have to buy from them. Going back to the revenue, these little things when this happens, it does make a huge difference in the revenue. Last summer was relatively wet season, revenue was still good, the year before it wasn't. Water use was high. So, it, you got two different years, one on the wet side, one on the hot, dry side. Revenue was roughly the same. So, doesn't make a huge dent in the revenue.
Interesting.
So, per the bylaw, a public notice, which was this meeting and a public hearing, is what we need to do this. So, I'm just introducing it now.
So, this is, this is a, or an article?
No. But there is a, the bylaw says that you guys can enact or modify rules and regulations for this issue.
Oh, okay. So, this is a change in regulations based on the current bylaw?
Correct. I gave this to Mark to get to the Water Commission, both this plan and the recommendation. The reasons they haven't got back to us yet.
So, we have the schedule.
No, it's just like, I basically introduced the concept today and then have a public hearing and a vote.
Do you want this in place?
I'm hoping to get this in place before Memorial Day, that's when the water use takes off, so we can fit into the schedule. Fortunately, this came kind of forward at the budget season, which is terrible for you guys, your schedules always fall.
As soon as there's a disaster.
So, that's the overview. Public hearing. Any questions?
Who will you have at the public hearing?
Who will we have?
Support.
Well, it's like a mark.
What?
Well, it's like a mark. I mean, I can, if you want to, I can have the consultants talk about this.
No, I just, I think Mark being here would be more.
Yeah, I couldn't see if it needed paying the consultants.
Yeah. Can we get this added to our Dropbox, though, so we have it for, for the notes? I lose paper all the time, but this is really good, so.
Yeah, I just did a quick synopsis today, and I know it's too late to get it to you guys.
Yeah, that's fine.
But I will. I think we have a water folder, that she could throw it in there, it'd be great.
Anything else? I know I'll lose it. Can I say anything else?
Joe, you get noticed today about the pothole bill?
Yes, I was going to actually mention it. Can we just say something?
Sure.
Oh, you guys got it?
Okay. So, they're going to.
But what are we getting?
I roughed it out. If it's proportioned to what we get now, it's going to be around 75 grand.
Okay.
Plus or minus.
Great.
We got the contract documents in the mail to us. It's just like a regular chapter 90 project, where we have to identify what we want to do, get it to them, they approve it, come back. The work has to be physically done by the end of this fiscal year.
Okay.
Which is, which is doable. And then the bills come in, I think, by August 11.
Okay, so maybe that's what the dues meant, that you had to comply, you had to fill out a form.
That's what I had to do. Usually tariffs and that, they don't, and we've spent a ton of money fixing potholes.
I know. But the majority of every community's work was done, you know, as soon as the snow melted. I mean, I had, you know, I had two crews out every five days a week, so I'm hoping, because my number probably needs a little bit higher than yours.
What I envision is, depending on how they let us use it, is there are certain streets that just took a beating this year that are really not scheduled in the next five years to pave, like Chestnut Street near Maguire Field fell apart. I mean, there's various streets, there's over here on Lowell Road, and what's the other one? Just three, four sections of town where they just need some milling and over.
You think they'll allow that? Do you think they'll allow that?
Doing a big pothole.
No, I know, it's a great idea, and I, I had the same, I have a street.
Lawson was a little vague in his instructions, so I'm going to let him put the stuff out and then I'll ask him. I would think so. Because that's even better than just putting a, patching it. Mass highways out there now, I came, went 28, went 93 to come here, they milled both significant sections of both roads, so they jump.
Oh, yeah, they milled some of 93.
So, that's good news. Unexpected little, which was like a month ago.
Exactly.
They had a bridge on 495 down through the concrete and the rebar. Today, I don't know whether it was, you know, something failed or what, they had that.
Park Street took a little bit of beating.
Northbound on 495.
Yeah, Park Street was certainly taken a beating.
Backed up all day.
So, I envision what I would be recommending, using the main streets, take the beating, the truck traffic, those kind of things. Chestnut Street, I mean, Central Street's online to be paved for the next year or two. Haywood Street's after that. So, lot of those major roads, I would envision using that to mill, when they got, it's already scheduled to pave, like one part of Central Street is this year to be paved.
What section?
Part two Spruce.
Yeah, that's been.
That's part of the recommended FY15. So, again, not to put a lot of money into that, if we're just going to figure it out. I think that's a full debt reconstruction one.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Go get that money.
Appointments, reapointments, item 11, for the Board of Registries, the Youth Services Committee. He talked.
Oh, no. I, I took everything out except that.
You don't want to put that in your code of conduct.
I keep meaning to return the book.
I know, I should do the same.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of the following name for reapportments, member of the Board of Registries for a term to expire April 1st, 2017, Joyce Jenny, 103 Elm Street.
Second.
Motion is second. Have any discussion? Mr. Ollman?
He's unanimately recommended by the Republican Town Committee and endorsed by the Town Clerk, serving, and I would recommend reapportment.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of the following names for appointment as members of the Youth Services Committee for terms to expire December 31st, 2016. Samantha Miller, 68 North Street, Leslie Schultz, 4 Central Street.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And then a second? Discussion?
I have the applications to vote. I happen to know Samantha and spoke to her, and highly qualified. And I did not speak to Ms. Schultz, but I did see her, again, her application and her background, and I think they'll do a great job.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
I, I want to know what their magic is in finding employees. Just, yeah.
Three for three?
It's not been three for three, it's been one great.
Oh, you're right, right, right.
Second one even better, and the third one is just, I just don't, don't know how they pulled it off.
They do a good job.
At the end of the appointments, reapointments, correct?
Yes.
Item 12, seasonal license, Robert Conners.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew their transient vendor license for the sale of flowers, Christmas trees, et cetera, at 226 Main Street for Robert Conners, 58 Wyman Street, woman mask to expire December 31st, 2014, subject to all employee department requirements.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? Anyone? All in favor?
Aye.
Be able to get your Easter lily at the last minute.
All right. Item 15, FY 2015, contract ratifications. The board met.
15? I'm sorry.
We just wrapped, I'm disgusted.
Item 13. Item 13, FY 2015.
Sorry. I just thought maybe I had a different mention.
I thought he said 15.
All right. Start over. Item 13, FY 2015, contract ratification. The board met in executive session prior to a regular session meeting this evening. During said executive session, the board ratified the following contracts, non-union, the administrative staff, DPW, police. With the police was the police patrolmen, as well as the police supervisors, as well as the library. The, these contracts will be for a one-year time period with a 2% wage increase. No other changes due.
Can I take a vote on it? You put it in there?
Yeah. They get to take an open session also.
Why don't we do it?
Can't hurt. Read it as a whole.
Read it.
No, you got it. No, leave it as, don't do that.
Okay.
We're fine. I came out and announced it.
Mr. Chairman, I move to ratify one-year contracts for the period of July 1, 2014 to June 30, 2015, to the following bargaining units.
Mr. Floyd, maybe you missed me. I don't think we have to do that.
Hope you don't.
I'm sorry.
I think you do have to come on an open session.
Doesn't do any harm, one of the elements.
Well, we separated it. It's because we got to separate it. It's fine.
We're going to separate the same way.
It has to be.
Sure.
This is a separate function, it can't be raised.
It's up to the minority group if they want to do that. With this, the other one, the way it was.
Yeah, you can do it.
The consensus prevails.
All right.
It, it's up to you.
Read it as one. Frisco?
It's okay, read as one.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move to ratify one-year contract for the period of July 1, 2014 to June 30, 2015, with the following bargaining units. North Running Administrative Staff Association, North Running DPW Teams Local 25, North Running Police Team Local 25, North Running Library Staff Local 4928, North Running Superior Office Association, Non-Union Employee Group.
Second.
Motion is second. For discussion purposes, based upon the votes taken in the executive session, in light of those votes, I'm voting in favor of this particular motion.
Same.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Just by way of explanation, you might want to explain to the public as to why we're doing this. All the contract agreements, collective bargaining agreements were up June 30th. And with the change in administration, we thought we'd maybe give the new town administrator a little bit of breathing room, instead of hopping into seven different collective bargaining sessions and negotiations.
Except for fire, wasn't it?
Except for the fire, except for the fire. So, therefore, we certainly appreciate the collective bargaining units cooperating with us in relation to not changing any of the terms and conditions of the current contracts and just moving forward with a 2% salary increase, and we'll start up with negotiations in the next coming fiscal year.
Nice talking to you, Mr. Ollman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Going back now to our laundry list of minutes that we're approving, starting with the August 19th, 2013, regular session minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the August 19th, 2013, regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. August 19th, 2013, executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the August 19th, 2013, executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
January 27th, 2013.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the January 27th, 2014, regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the January 27th, 2014, executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the January 30th, 2014, executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the February 3rd, 2014, regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the February 20, I'm sorry, February 3rd, 2014, executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the February 15th, 2014, budget minutes as written.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
So, I was, these two I was out for, I can make, can I make the motion? But I, okay, I can't vote on them.
Well, you can abstain.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the February 18th, 2014, regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
401 abstention. Motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the February 18th, 2014, executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Yeah, no, I, no, I didn't know if you had realized that.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Both for me?
Abstain, I'm sorry.
401 abstention.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the March 3rd, 2014, regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the March 3rd, 2014, executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the March 17th, 2014, regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the March 17, 2014, Executive Session Minutes as written.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. That leaves item four, legal bills for February 2014.
Sorry. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for February 2014 in the amount of $18,185.68 as follows. Coleman and Page, General, $4,316.62. Coleman and Page Labor, $140.00. West, $475.56. Furman Gregory Deptula, $13,249.50.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, gets us down, huh? Pretty good? All over the business. Mr. O'Leary?
I would just like to comment on what's occurring north of the border in Andover in relation to the usury rates that they're proposing to charge us starting May 1st. It's absolutely outrageous. The board of selectmen up there who serve as water commissioners decided to raise the rates up there for their regular residential customers 5%. The rates that's being proposed for the town of North Reading is in excess of 15% or thereabouts. I don't think that there's been a fair amount of discussion, and I'll defer to you, Mr. Chairman, as far as the discussions that have taken place, because I know you were involved with some, but what's occurring up there is absolutely untenable. You know, they're wondering why we're looking towards the MWRA, they're wondering why we have to look for alternative sources. But the, you know, the fact is, is that, you know, they're taking advantage of the fact that we need their water. You know, we signed an intermunicipal, signed an intermunicipal agreement back in 1991, which was enacted through the legislature because our wells were polluted by GE at the time. And we then became restricted as to what we could draw, further restricted by the state after that, as to what we could draw on the Ipsut River Basin. So we were forced into the untenable position of having to look elsewhere in order to just meet our basic needs here. It would appear to me that the town of Andover is taking full advantage of that and looking to balance their rates on our back. And I think it's extremely unfortunate. I think there needs to be more public dialogue between the two boards. I think we need to contact our state legislators and to ask them to file some sort of legislation to protect communities such as North Reading, and I'm sure there may be others in the Commonwealth that have been forced into this position through no fault of our own, again, because our wells were polluted and because DEP, or DEQE at the time, DEP, put restrictions on communities that were drawing out of the Ipsut River Water Basin. That's what we could do. I think it's incumbent upon our legislators to take some action to cap what host communities can charge, communities such as North Reading. And again, this is just a unilateral move on their part, which is unfortunate. And I think we need to involve the state legislature. I think we need to engage in public discussion with the board up there. And I would propose that we have a joint meeting with them. As far as, you know, us complying with their request, not their request, their demand of a 15% increase effective May 1st, I'm inclined not to, not to comply at this particular time. We don't have a signed contract with them. As far as I'm concerned, the terms and conditions of the current, the contract should be the same until we come to an agreement with them. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily agree to play, to pay it. But I throw that out for discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Well, yeah, I'm glad you did. Mr. Valiakonis and I have met with town manager of Andover. The chairman of the board on two occasions, I think, since we met in December. We've met again January, February. And this board had discussed the rates that the Andover board had proposed for us to consider. There were one, I believe there were a three- to five-year term, and a 10-year. Three, five, and 10-year term. And this board on March 3 voted to accept the 10-year water rate that was proposed by the board in Andover. And Mr. Valiakonis, the following day, communicated that to the town manager in Andover. So based upon that, I thought we were just waiting for the agreement to be finalized and we'll be locked in at that rate. I'm trying to get back to the data, it tells me what that rate was. So I was...
I think it was a 2.5% increase, or 2% increase per year.
So I was very much surprised and dismayed at the email that we received today from Mr. Valiakonis, which forwarded to us an email he received from town manager in Andover telling us that last evening, the Andover board, in their capacity as their water commissioners, voted to increase our rates effective March, on May 1, to $3.43.
$41.00.
$3.41.
100 cubic feet for every, per 100 cubic feet.
100 cubic feet. So I don't know where, where it went back. I thought we were just finalizing the agreement. I thought we agreed on terms. So there is an issue here. And I don't disagree with you, Mr. O'Leary, we don't have a signed agreement. We'll pay it with the rate we were paying all along. I think that's a position we should take. Is that, they're just trying to solve their problem on our backs and we have no other choice of getting a water supply anywhere else.
And again, and they're increasing our rates at a greater rate than anybody else, any of their other customers up there in Andover. They've established a separate municipal customer rate. We just happen to be the only municipal customer. And so I think we're being unfair to...
Well, we're being even further mistreated by the fact that their rate includes the maintenance of their water system throughout the town.
So it's, and I thought, I thought over a period of recent months here, I thought we offered some reasonable proposals to them for consideration. I thought we were in line with having something agreed upon. We had a proposal from several months ago from them, which we agreed to, as we were quoted out just last month. And all of a sudden, two nights ago, they decided to take a vote, increase the rates by a substantial increase, which is far outside what we budgeted. And the impact on our rate payers is going to be hugely significant. And our rate payers are already paying higher than area rates just because of the situation we're in, where our wells were shut down because of contamination and we were limited as to what we can draw from the Ipsut River Water Basin and we were forced to go for interbasin transfer.
That's what I took today, talking about putting further restrictions on drawing the water.
Well, that's a, that's a money saver, right? Just restrict what they can use so they can't buy it. But it's, it really is untenable. And I think what they're, what they're doing is unfair and I think it's unfounded. And I believe that the legislation needs to take some action to protect communities such as ours from, again, the communities that host the water systems to just take advantage of us.
I don't disagree with you. Still trying to look at what the rate was that we agreed to pay.
It wasn't that.
I thought it was around $2.95.
It was under, it was...
It was just under $3. It was like $2.95. I think it was $2.95.
2% increase, I think.
2% a year. And what they've done is one fell swoop, gone up in excess of 15%.
I don't know how the other board members feel, but I'm agreeing with Mr. O'Leary.
What's the steps we should take now?
I believe that we should have, I believe we should notify them in writing that it is our intention to continue to pay at the current rates until we have a signed agreement. Two, I think we should forewarn them that we're going to file, have legislation filed in order to protect our interests and protect us from usury rates being filed, being imposed on us by them. And three, press a joint meeting. I don't care where the venue is, they're here. I prefer to have it here in front of our viewers rather than their viewers. Although their viewers, I'd say, you know, I think their residents are extremely concerned because what's, what's been exposed over the last year up there is that they are not fully funding their water department. They're subsidizing it through the general fund and it's finally catching up with them. And as they're trying to incrementally make those changes, people are complaining that their water rates are drugged, but they consider to be dropping substantially, which, file us, we pay here. But what they've done now is they're looking upon us as short-term customers, so therefore maximizing the revenue they can get out of us for whatever period of time they believe we may be drawing from them. But there's nothing wrong with us working with them to, again, wean them off, wean ourselves off of them. And I don't, it would never be my intention to just shut the spigot off.
This is what doesn't make sense. So on February 12, town manager in Andover sent to Mr. Valiakonis the following email. "As per our dis- conversation yesterday, here's the proposed water rate for North Reading as voted by the selectmen, the Andover selectmen, at their meeting on Monday, February 10. Current water rate, $2.95 per 100 cubic feet." This is what they voted and it was our choice what to accept. One-year rate, $4.50, 100 cubic feet. Three-year rate at $4. Five-year rate at $3.50, or a 10-year rate at, at $3. We, when our meeting on March 3, we voted and agreed that we would accept their 10-year rate. We accepted their rate.
Right.
They offered something, we accepted. As far as I'm concerned, we, we have an agreement at $3 for 100 cubic feet. So...
What was the rate that you heard, Steve?
$3.40.
$3.41.
$3.41 came in today.
Beginning effective May 1.
Make it even worse.
15 days first.
Whatever it is.
Three weeks from now.
Three weeks.
Significant increase over what we even said we would agree to pay. And that was conveyed on March 4 from Mr. Valiakonis to the town, town manager in Andover.
I agree that a letter, a formal letter needs to come.
I think, I'll have a discussion with Mr. Valiakonis tomorrow.
Now, this is, this is interesting because the Republican State Convention, I ran into Alex Bispoli. And he was under the impression that there was no agreement. And that was only a couple of weeks ago. And he said, no, I mean, this is what he told me.
Well, maybe their town manager isn't conveying the information to their board because I have the proof that Mr. Valiakonis conveyed that information.
No, I see that. Question is, the water commission is the board's selectmen?
Right.
That's...
Yep, that's, that was the email that went from their town manager to Mr. Valiakonis either today or yesterday.
Or is it like us, where we have a water commission and the board approves the rates?
They serve and set the rates as well.
This is, this is what, yeah, that email, the town manager to Greg came today at 2:30, 2:28 to be exact, informing them that their board of selectmen, in their capacity as their water and sewer commissioners, voted Monday evening to increase our rates. It's at $3.41 per 100 cubic feet.
I, someone who was sitting in at the meeting there texting me during the meeting. And so I informed Greg the fact that, I said, you know, you may as well get in touch with Buzz because this is what's happening. So he, I think he had reached out to the town manager of Buzz that following morning.
Can I just add something?
Can you add what?
Can I add something? I looked back in the minutes from the executive session on the 3rd, March 3rd.
Sure.
And...
Oh, you can't, you can't...
I don't know about the executive session.
But you might reference it if we have an agenda.
Yeah, it explains it on page 2.
Well, we have a plan, a planning meeting.
Which one, which one was it?
March 3, let's discuss it. Page 2, we just happen to have them all here.
Yeah, we just happen to have a whole pile of it.
So did Greg send you that or did you, you copy it on a meeting?
Do you know if Greg actually sent it?
No, I think he...
No, that confirms, just confirms what you're saying.
Yeah.
It was also...
Greg sent it to us almost immediately, he sent it like 2:45 this afternoon.
It confirms exactly what he's saying.
Thank you. She's good?
She's very good. I don't know about that.
But anyway, I, Mr. Chairman, I think you need to facilitate some sort of a meeting between the two boards or some sort of an agreement as far as they're acknowledging the agreement that we...
Yeah, I agree that the letter should go and that we should actually request to be on their agenda or get them on our agenda. And we got to sit face to face and make this...
And hopefully with that outreach, maybe cool heads will prevail, but then they're going to have to rescind their action and...
Well, I'm curious whether or not they rescinded their actions that they had taken in February. They voted rates for us in February. So I'd be curious to see the minutes from the meeting of Monday night or actually watch it.
Well, it's in there. Again, it was in the Eagle Tribune too, that they did it.
But I'll be seeing Mr. Valiakonis in the morning and we'll discuss this issue.
That's about all I had.
Oh, thank you.
That's new instead of all.
Well, it's both.
A little bit of both, yeah, it's been ongoing for a while.
Mr. Foden?
Mr. Chin, I just want to take this opportunity to update everyone where the TA screening committee is with, with the process. On March 13, we convened the committee for its first meeting and in order to the actual meeting. We went through the process with Mr. Kobayashi of the Collins Center and agreed on dates going forward on, on how we would all meet and the process. We met again on April 1 to, well, in the meantime, between, between the 13th and April 1, Mr. Kobayashi had been receiving applications. Once he, once the, the deadline for the applications approached, Mr. Kobayashi forwarded them to us along with who their recommendations are for, to be interviewed and a list of questions that we wanted to, that we were going to discuss at our following meeting. On April 1, we met, we went through all the applicant, all the applicants, 21 applications.
I just might add that on the 13, when Mr. Kobayashi was going through the process, they were going to make a recommendation based on their screening, the first level screening of the interviews that we requested, something different than he proposed. And that was that even though he was, we were acceptable to him providing their recommendation list, they would provide us all of the resumes, which they did.
So if I understand it correctly, they got 21 resumes?
They got 21.
They called it down to a certain number, but...
They called it down to, I believe, a...
But the committee asked to see all the resumes?
All, correct.
I, I think that was...
Good idea.
So at that point, we met on April 1, we reviewed them as a group. At that point, one of the applicants had been offered a position someplace else, so he pulled his name out. We went through them all and decided to bring in six applicants for interviews. Those are scheduled on this past Friday and Saturday, so April 4 and 15, we did interviews. I'm sorry. April 4th and 5th.
I wish it was the 5th.
I know. We did, we did interviews and we spent a good amount of time after the interviews and discussed each candidate at that point and came up with candidates that we wanted the Collins Center to do due diligence. So what they're going to do is with the, the names that we gave them, they're going to do background checks. They're going to get release forms from those candidates to ensure that we have their permission to do the background checks, talk to anybody we need to talk to. I'm assuming that they'll notify anybody they need to notify that they're, they're finalists for the positions. And on, that'll take about two weeks. So it's the, the desire of the screening committee to come before the board on April 22 to present the names once the vetting process is completed.
Then it'll be the board's responsibility to determine when the public interview process should take place. And I think, and Joe and I are in agreement, that that should be a separate meeting.
Right, right.
Not part of one of our regular meetings.
So can we schedule that now? Can we at least go put something in our calendars so we have something to say?
That's what I'd like to do, so...
Well, it all depends on how many candidates are going to be presented to the board for consideration. Will they need one meeting or two meetings?
Well, we should probably, I don't know what you guys got it down or not.
Well, until they're vetted, you know, we don't know. My assumption is we need one meeting.
I would say one meeting, yeah.
So I would suggest we set, we meet on the 22nd, that's our regular meeting. We don't have anything, that's a Tuesday, it's the Tuesday after the Monday holiday. So I don't know what everyone's calendar is the following Monday, there's nothing, we don't have any meetings scheduled.
On the 28th?
The 28th, Monday the 28th.
We have a budget hearing. That's what I had in my notes, but...
That was Greg's original schedule, was it?
Okay, yes, it was.
Yeah, because I had put that calendar in every once in a while, something pops up and I say, I don't recall that.
Yeah.
So we don't have that one anymore?
That's what I would suggest that we do, if it's the 22nd. Can we schedule public interviews for Monday the 28th?
Yeah, I already have meetings scheduled for us that date anyway, so it's worked for me.
Well, wait a minute now. When's the, the school head there budget hearing?
Right.
Yeah.
When is our schedule?
The committee has a meeting on the 28th.
Well, I mean, we don't, we probably want to have that here.
You would think. Just a couple of things, Mr. Chin. First of all, I, I would like to suggest to the, to the screening committee, again, formally knowing what they're going to bring forward to us, but I would like to see somewhere between three and five applicants for us to consider. A minimum of three, maybe as five, depending on how it sifts out, but as many as three. And additionally, the other thing that we should consider is that, you know, it appears that there's going to be a change in the makeup of the board of selectmen with Mr. Delaney choosing not to seek reelection. I think a new member of the board of selectmen should participate in the interview process since they're going to have a three-year term with this new town administrator. So I think, I think, you know, an extra week wouldn't make, from a timing standpoint, for Mr. Valiakonis's exit and a new person coming on.
I, I can understand the rationale there, Steve. I think the issue is, these very good candidates are out interviewing everywhere.
Right.
And, you know, the longer you wait, the more of a chance someone else scoops them up.
Well, I understand that, but for the sake of...
So there's a risk, just understand, there's a risk associated with dragging it out too long.
But I just think the, the new member of the board should be able to weigh in. And again, and the two candidates that we have running for office have both been past members of the board of selectmen, so it's not like they're coming in totally green either. They've been involved in the process before, but they've certainly communicated and worked with the town administrators in the past so that they would have some sort of an idea as to what they would be looking for for the town administration.
They could anticipate, it's an open public meeting, they can attend. They can ask their questions.
No, I understand that, but, but they're going to be sitting on the board. So one of those people, one of those gentlemen that are going to be sitting on this board, they should have a say. They're going to be elected for a three-year term. They're gonna be elected for a three-year term and for a seven-day time period, you know, or thereabouts, so maybe, you know, two weeks, less than two weeks. To me, it's.
Well, I don't, I don't think we have the luxury, I don't think we have the luxury to wait, like Mr. Maseri said, I don't wanna take the risk of losing really good candidates.
And the other thing is, is in the, the past, what we've done is while we've had a, an open interview with them, we've also taken the time as a board to tour the community with the applicants, with the finalists. Sit down, have a lunch somewhere or breakfast somewhere and sit across the table, have a cup of coffee and get to know them a little bit better, other than in a, in a formal setting like this. And I thought that process, which is what we did last time, was very, very valuable. Little, just a little different venue, different atmosphere, show them the town a little bit, show them what we have for assets, issues, and then stop at a local establishment, we happened to use Hillview at the time because it was available. And break bread with the individuals and get a feel for them. Again, this is someone that we're gonna be contracting with for a sort of three-year period, you know, a substantial sum of money and I thought the process we used last time was pretty good. So it doesn't have, just after one interview here and I think it's part of the due diligence we need to.
Are you assuming that we would make a decision as soon as the interviews are over?
Well, what else would you be doing, under the proposal?
Well, I mean, it depends on, you know, you wanna interview them and then walk around with them later or be one-on-one on them? What are you talking about specifically?
Well, what, what we did the, the last time is we set up a staggered schedule on different days, obviously, when members of the board can make it to them. Went out, toured the town, we took the, it was either the senior citizen bus or a, a van, a van from the school department, toured some of the facilities that we have in town to familiarize the individual with what we have, what the issues are, talk about some of those issues with the individual. We went to Hillview and had lunch or breakfast and a cup of coffee and kicked some ice.
This was before the formal town interview? 'Cause I think, I recall we had a, a private interview back then, we were allowed to do that.
Right.
We, we can't do that now.
So.
I don't have a problem with that piece of it, so what you're saying is you would do that first.
Do twofold, twofold, yeah, I, I would do that.
How can you do that?
How can you do that?
You have to.
Can't have all five of us together.
You can still post it and go, sure, you post it and just take a little tour and.
How, you can post it, but how is it open meeting if people can't sit in the van, you don't know what you're talking about?
Right.
Invite the press, I mean, you, you post it as to what it is, and if someone wants to follow you in the car, they can do it, you know?
I can understand your, your approach if we didn't have this huge investment upfront with the selection committee, which is made up of seven members. I mean, I think they've done a lot of work.
I understand, but, but I'm not willing to sit here and advocate my responsibility either. And I appreciate the work of the screening committee, but the ultimate decision and responsibility rests here. And I'm sure they've done a fine job and then we probably would come to the same conclusions, but, you know, I can't assume that totally. And again, I have to come to my own conclusion as an individual member of the board and collectively we have to do it, do the same thing. And then that's why, you know, it's, the process is important. Public needs to know that, you know, this board, while we allowed an initial screening to take place and a honing down of the candidates to whatever number it's going to be. Again, I think we should establish some sort of a number, and I'm not looking for an either-or, I'm looking for something more, that's why I say a minimum of three. Then, then the board collectively will, will come to a decision. And the other issue that we have and that we, we should conclude on is, you know, we're gonna have a change in the membership of the board in less than a month. And, you know, we're talking about the twenty-eighth of April and what day is the election, the seventh of May? It's not for three weeks. And, and I think it would be, I think it would behoove us to recognize, and again, I understand that we run the risk of losing a candidate, but recognize that the new member of the board has a vested interest and the public is electing someone to sit here to make these types of decisions. So it's, and they're gonna have a three-year term. The new one, it's a one seat, you know, it's, it's not like two of us are gonna elect at the same time, this is the single seat. And the rest of them are gonna be here one or two years. If we choose to run for reelection, get reelected, fine, or choose not to run, you know, we're one and done or two and done. This new person is here for three years. You know, I think they should be able to weigh in, have a vested interest and also have some skin in the game. Rather than if it doesn't work out, sit here and say, oh, I, I didn't choose this one here, I wasn't in on that.
I'm in favor of the process that we had agreed on in the beginning and.
What did we agree on, other than the screening committee?
Right, and they were gonna down select, that's what we agreed on.
That's done already. We're talking about the next step, which is now our total responsibility. So we have to come to an agreement on what we.
And I like the schedule that we're talking about, I think we have to stay on that schedule, I, I think we take a lot of risks. And I think we should make it open to the public.
No, it's, it's open to the public, there's no, there's no getting around that.
I think we have a choice, yeah.
Well, you were talking about these private, right around.
No, we did, we actually did.
Yeah, it wasn't private.
It was the, the idea of getting the candidate to get a little better picture of the, 'cause they're supposed to, presumably, these candidates have been around and done those things. In terms of the board meeting one-on-one, I think there is some value there than just the interview. I mean, you're gonna interview, you're gonna meet the person for the first time unless you happen to know the individual and you're gonna make a decision on that, and you might wanna have coffee with them, whether it's one-on-one.
See how they interact with, with, together, you take them to the police station, you take them to the fire station, you take them to the senior city, how do they interact with people? You know, take them to a local coffee shop or, or sandwich shop and see how they engage. I mean, this is gonna be our spokesperson, I mean, you know, we come and go. You know, this position is supposed to be the, the anchor.
Yeah, in fairness, I guess Joe and I, because we're on the screening committee.
You have an advantage, you're obviously.
We, we have a little bit of an advantage, you know, and we're gonna meet and talk to the people again. I, I think, you know, you might even, we might view them differently in a public forum than we did at the meeting, so. Putting the, the risk aside, can we come up with a process that will work? I guess I'm less concerned about a future member of the board, we could've been doing this two months ago and we wouldn't wait. It just happens to be.
No, it's a happenstance, it's a happenstance, but, but it's, it's a real calendar-driven thing as in relation to when things are going to occur.
The trade-off there is, how long can we afford to wait and lose potentially a good candidate, that's my concern.
We invested the money in the Collins Center, look, it's a little awkward for me to talk about it because I'm the guy going up the door, but, you know, but trying to be objective about it, we invested this money in Collins Center. This committee has done real men's work in terms of what they called it down to in terms of the finalist. We already heard that one applicant pulled out before they even had a chance to tell them whether or not he or she was getting an interview because he got a job somewhere else.
That happens too, it's just like.
Well, I know, I understand, but they've got it now to a, to a finalist, if one of these people that are chosen as a finalist ends up getting a job sometime after what we had just talked about, the twenty-eighth, and we don't do the final interviews and don't have a selection, and that may have been the first, the best candidate out of the lot.
So the anticipation, so the anticipation was we're gonna make a decision on the twenty-eighth?
Oh, I, I just, no, no, I, I just, I've heard, I've heard of the timeline of the process, but I.
Trying to work out what we wanna do. It's up to us to decide.
I would think that night or soon thereafter, we would take a vote. I don't know, or do you do the interviews and then the next day or two you meet with them on this basis? Or you try to do it, you know, the end of the, the week of the twenty-first? They're gonna be presented to us on the twenty-second.
Right, in between that and when you set the interviews up, you make personal arrangements to meet with the individual.
I, I just.
Perfectly fine.
And honestly, trying to be objective, that's, that's the risk I see. They've done all this work, they've got it down to finalist, and we end up losing one, maybe a finalist, because they get a job somewhere else because we delay the process. And I know it's not significant, but it's, it's a delay and it's, it's at least a, you're talking at least, was it a week, week and a half? So, but, Mr. Ford?
I just wanna talk about, I just wanna, about the screening committee, I mean, what a, I can't say how committed this, this group was and it was, it was a pleasure to work with them and they did a phenomenal job, I know, no one took it for anything less than it was, they, they, they put the time and effort and they came to each meeting ready to, you know, ready to engage, put the, put the time and effort into reviewing all the, the resumes. And by chance, I think, when we looked at all the applicants, the six that we decided to, to bring in to interview were almost at the top of everybody's list. And it was a, it was, you know, it was, and even, even the, the names that we decided to move forward were unanimous. So I think you have some very good candidates and, and I agree with Bob, I think we take the chance of, of losing at least one based on, there's a lot of movement going on right now in municipal management. There were a lot of jobs open and some of them still aren't filled, so I think the sooner the better.
I would like to see a minimum of three presented to the board for consideration.
I don't know, what else, I mean, it's gonna come to us, but.
I don't know what the number is, so.
I would.
So we've got six that was near unanimous as far as what, who should be interviewed. They should be able to present us with three.
I don't know whether it'll be three, four, five, two, I, I don't know what it's gonna be, but I put faith and trust in this committee, I think it was, based upon my knowledge of who, who was on the committee.
I'm not, I'm not discounting any of that, other than I'm not looking for an either-or. I'm looking for three people to interview, and again, my impression of somebody, maybe someone, someone else's, ultimately, it's, it's our, our opponent.
I, I'm just gonna say this, I mean, regardless of what the number is, the committee did its due diligence, put a lot of time and effort into it and are putting forth names that they feel are not only qualified but are a good fit for, for the, for the situation, for the town as of today. So that being said, you know.
And there was no, there was no mandatory requirement of the number of people.
But my recommendation to the committee at this point would.
Send us three.
But the process is.
Can I, can I make, can I just add something? If they only give you two names and then one drops out, you're left with one candidate, that's why you should have at least three. In case one drops out at the last minute, you still have two.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know what's coming.
I know, I know, I know, that's, I'm just saying, I said that to the school committee twenty years ago and they picked three, I'm serious. And they, and they picked three, I'm just saying.
Well, the board always has the opportunity to reject everybody.
But that would be counterproductive too. So to ask the committee to come up with a recommendation of three, even if it isn't unanimity on the three, you know, it's gonna be majority. This is the three that we, that you should consider. I don't think, I don't think there needs to be unanimity on anybody, you know, personally.
Well.
And again, there hasn't been unanimity on anybody that we've had in the last, just like the year.
The committee has completed its job, unfortunately.
You can't, but again, whatever it is, I mean, if it's not three, you can't go back and say, find me a third? Or if it isn't, or if it's three, we're three, we're good, you know?
Look, I don't know what it's gonna be, if it's two, I'm happy, if it's three, I'm happy, if it's four, five, whatever the number is because I'm sure the committee did the work.
I'm sure they did two, and I'm sure that they could give us three for consideration.
And we'll find out. We'll find out what it's gonna be.
Ask them to put forth three, right now they're doing the due diligence on the background checks.
I don't, I don't, quite honestly, I don't, I don't, it doesn't matter to me whether it's two or it's five or six, it doesn't, doesn't matter to me.
The only thing.
It matters to me.
I, I understand the rationale.
Okay, I understand.
I, I understand the rationale and, you know, I sit here now and I, I think about it, we probably should've been more upfront with the selection committee on what we want. I think it's a little late now to come up with this, to throw this on them since we should've just, why didn't we say this before?
Seems like we let this committee.
I don't believe it's late, I don't think it's too late, we haven't even been presented with anybody yet, they're just doing the background checks on people.
I'm just telling you.
It's not too late.
I, I don't know, I get the sense that, I'm starting to get the sense that it may be, I tend, I don't, I have no idea how many.
Would you like to consider one, two, three, four, five, I mean?
Well, I like the selection committee, I think, I, I think it's a very qualified selection committee to down select it to the point where we can make a decision. And if they decide, in my eyes, if they can decide that we can do it with two, then I'm gonna trust that, but I, I don't have a choice.
You do have a choice, that's the difference, that's the difference of opinion, we do have a choice.
They, they gave them the task. We gave them the task, they're doing their job. If we wanted them to have three or five, we should've told them that.
You could still tell them that.
I, I don't wanna trust the selection committee.
I don't know what.
Especially with these two board members on there, I have a lot of respect for them, I have a lot of trust in both of them. I don't think they'd ever set us up for failure, so, whatever they decide is gonna be fine with me. That's where I stand.
Whatever they present to us, it's two, three, four, five, six, whatever they present to us.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we request the selection committee to present three candidates to the Board of Selectmen for consideration.
And the motion, so here a second.
Not even for purposes of discussion, though.
Clear a second? Clear a second?
I think in failing to do so, we're not providing us with opportunity. Opportunity for consideration of, again, I.
We gave them their charges to bring us finalists. They're gonna do so, and I'll just say again, whether it's two, three, four, five or six, I'm comfortable.
Again, maybe, maybe my expectations were a little bit different, where I didn't expect them to give me an either-or, or here's the one.
Well, I'll, I'll say this, I don't expect them to present one, so if you wanna make the motion, present us at least two.
But I also didn't expect, I didn't expect them to say either-or, you know, and.
Well, we don't even know what's coming to us.
I got an idea. It's not three.
How do you know this?
I couldn't get a second to even request three, I'm requesting three.
I don't, I don't think it's necessary, I think they did the.
I'm requesting three. My guess is they could come up with three. And let us, then we'll come to the conclusion as to who we, you know, it's our responsibility collectively.
So let's assume for a second, right now they only have two, you wanted to throw a third in the mix just to have a third.
We know they, we know they don't have two, we know they had six.
No, 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 but what I'm saying, no, but just.
No, we interviewed six.
They interviewed six, all right, so, so let's assume for a second, your suspicion is correct for some reason.
Again, if the third candidate is, is gonna be, always gonna fall off the board, and I don't consider it to be a waste of time.
Oh, I do.
I don't.
If it's not a fit to the profile, we, we spent time.
I'm all set, I'm all set, I'm all set, that's all the, rest of the members of the board, I'm all set, I respectfully disagree. Having gone through the process four or five times.
Was the process ever done this way?
Which way? Yes, we've had selection committee in the past, we've also had board decisions, we've had.
Have we, have we gone, have you gone through the process? Yeah, we hired the Collins Center, had, had town ever done any?
No, 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 we, we never hired the Collins Center or, or like type thing, that doesn't mean it was good, bad or indifferent. We've had some very good town, long-term town administrators, yeah, they've inspired very a lot. And we've had some others that inspired a little longer than they should've, but that's okay.
We, we're on data set, I mean, I'm looking at.
I got the twenty-eighth down, but can we get confirmation when our budget hearing is? I got the 28th down, but can we get confirmation of when our budget hearing is? That would be probably helpful.
Let me just take a look.
It's like I said in my schedule...
They laid out a schedule and they gave it to us back a few weeks ago.
Oh, you did? You gave it to us a few times?
There was the original thing back and I told...
Yeah, that's what I think I have on my calendar.
I think that, if that's on for the 28th, that's the thing I can move.
Right.
Well, no, we have to deal with the signing of the warrant, although we've done the budget hearing after signing of the warrant, but we haven't, we should re-review, I noticed they were in our, in the packet, the proposed town warrant.
Because initially, obviously Greg wasn't able to join us today, initially, he wanted to discuss those.
Well, I think we do because I know of a couple of things that may be missing from there.
Right.
There's one related to the police chief and I just looked, I scanned through it briefly tonight and I didn't see it. And I just think we need to go through it and make sure we have everything in there.
Right. But it came off...
There wasn't money on it, it was just something had to be put in.
Yeah, it came off tonight's agenda. Yeah, it's great. It wasn't able to be in.
So, our next meeting is scheduled for the 22nd. I have a suggestion with respect to, we can make a decision in terms of the interviewing process on the 22nd, in terms of time.
Well, I'm looking at everyone's calendar now.
Yeah, okay, let me finish, all right? We can go back to Mr. Kobashi and ask him what his thoughts are in terms of timing. He's got some sense of where these people are in any interviewing process, booming. So, we could get a reading from him associated with, you know, should we be reacting quickly or can we hold it off and give us a little more time associated with, what Steve was suggesting, associated with the new selectmen? Or even just to give us a little more breathing room to meet with people and do whatever we choose to do associated with the overall final selection process? So, I don't have a feel for, I sense his risk based on what's been going on, but he's got a better, he knows more about what these candidates are doing. He's probably presented it to three other places, right? So, we think about just getting back and ask that question.
I can, yeah, I can be chose one.
Since you're the chair, just get a sense of... He, you know, I mean, he said he needed the two weeks, right, to go through the whole process? The core check, checking their educational credentials versus what they've claimed. What was the last thing? There were three items he was...
28, credit check.
Credit check, that's right. So, if he gives us some feeling that, you know, it's low risk kicking the can down another week or two, then I guess I'm, I can feel a little more comfortable about that.
I'll have it on tomorrow. Do you wanna pencil something in for the 28th in case...
Yeah, I think we should.
Does that work for everyone, the 28th?
Yeah.
Steve, does that work? Which one do you date for you? Should we start at six? Be able to make it at 6:00?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think, what are you scheduling? 90 minutes or...
What?
I would think probably 90 minutes.
But I'm just, yeah.
What did you guys use?
Public, you're gonna allow public to ask questions? You gotta have at least that. Well, 9:30 would get you to, I mean, 6 o'clock would get you to, let's say, 8 o'clock.
Depends on how many we have. If it's three, you're looking at 10:30, 90 minutes apiece.
Well, you're gonna have a little break in between.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you might be too nuts, but it all depends on the number of candidates. And as far as, as far as public participation and asking questions, I don't ever recall that happening, not that it's a bad thing, but it can, can be sometimes, depending upon, you know, if you guys are in interest.
They might come up with a question we never ask, you know?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of danger in that, quite honestly.
Leaving it that open?
Yeah. I think there's danger in it.
All right, so 90 minutes?
I think a public interview is required, but not public questioning of the interviewees.
I think that's a recipe for disaster. Kid, maybe get up and just walk out. We may be, we may be left with zero.
Yeah, so, it's open to the public to come in and listen and watch and all that, but I don't think they should have the participation level.
Whatever the majority of the people would like to do?
Why don't we, why don't we take a position on that now because...
Oh, no, I agree.
You wanted to say it.
No, I didn't say it.
Usually they come in and ask questions.
Well, I meant the two selectman candidates, but...
They're not gonna be able to do that, so you gotta factor in whatever decision you ultimately make, you know?
That's fine. I'm going with it.
So, right now, we're tentatively 6 o'clock on the 28th for interviews of the finalists.
We should have water.
My wife makes some cookies, sorry.
So, you're done?
I'm done.
Mr. Musseri, all the new business?
All the new business.
You forgot, you had all the new business.
Oh, God. Been a busy week. Well, the 22nd, the capital planning committee wants to present to the board their recommendations. In addition to the recommendations, Dawn is gonna present the capital financing plan as it goes forward, so we'll work that out as part of the whole process. And I think the Hillview was in early, I missed the early part of the meeting because of construction on 495, but we've covered everybody at this point. All the questions have been answered and I think, generally, they've got, you know, a good plan has been put together.
When will the board get the books? Any idea? I think, I told you before the meeting, probably, probably the...
Yeah, that's a good point.
I think it was probably on Wednesday before the, no, I thought it was like Wednesday, Thursday. I'll talk till this tomorrow if you want.
Liz has together, all she had to do was, I mean, she had done a great job. It's just a matter of a couple of minor tweaks that have been made, getting them in there and then getting them bound up.
The other thing I asked Liz if she could have for us that night was...
We have to debate.
Last year's CIP projects that were approved, where they stand as far as completed, you know, percentage-wise and expenditures and stuff like that.
Well, that's good.
Or passed or moved up. It's gonna be much, it's much more comprehensive than passed, so there's been a big improvement as a result of that, it's the committee that worked out, so...
Appreciate those efforts. Community Impacting, the event last week, week before.
Oh, yeah, thanks. The Community Impact Team sponsored a program for adults, was mostly with school-age children. The primary attendance was people younger than me on abusive dating. And it was held at the high school cafeteria and when I arrived, the podium and the chairs are all, the tables are all folded up. The chairs are all spread out and, you know, how people start to trickle in, I'm saying, gee, I hope some people show up, you know? And before it got started, there was people scrambling around and put up more chairs. It was a great turnout, great presentation by the district attorney, Mary Ann...
Marion Ryan, yeah.
Ryan. And Sean, what's his last name?
I should know him, I've known him for years.
You know...
McMaster?
Sean McMaster. And they were gonna run, they were, I don't know if they did it yet, they were running a program for the seniors and juniors and seniors. Don't know if that's been scheduled yet, but they had some great examples of the kinds of things to look for and resources to contact. And I left there just saying, holy cow, the things that go on that you don't know about and never knew about, right? Exactly. Not have to worry about grandkids, you know, they're getting up to that age.
I left there saying, oh, no.
So, it's just another smashing success of a program that's been run and I'm sure that the, and this was set up by the subcommittee of the CIT. Great group of people.
I would agree. I had the opportunity to attend. My wife attended as well, given the fact we had two teenage children, and I thought it was very well done, very well attended. I agree with you. First got there, it was probably about 15, 20 people and then all the people taking chairs off our tables, yeah. Marion and Sean did a very nice job. It's just things that just, things you wouldn't think of as a parent, what to look for, so I think it was very, very helpful, very helpful. Another job well done by CIT.
By that committee, yeah. We just sit there and talk about how...
Everyone, everyone participates in that.
When Amy and our police chief, Michael Murphy, just pushed the thing beyond all expectations and continue to do so. One other item is we're starting a business subcommittee to love the CIT. Main focus is gonna be to raise money to keep the program sustained. Our last trip into Boston, our legislation's kinda hinted that, yeah, we'll find some money for it, but you gotta start looking for other sources to keep this thing going. So, Peter Manjean from the...
What's that?
With the Hill Bank, he has volunteered to chair. I'm meeting with him Monday. I'm gonna try to get that thing organized and figure out how we can create a sustaining flow of cash and I think you are interested in helping out there. That's where we are with that.
Thank you.
Not that I can think of. Mr. Pecable won't meet you. Been a crazy day.
I only have one thing. Tomorrow, we'll be, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts hosting its annual economic development summit. Governor Patrick will be the, doing the opening remarks and President, Senator, I mean, Theresa Murray will be there and Speaker DeLeo will be there. A lot of other senior leadership and there'll be a lot of presentations, panels and workshops. So, I'll be attending that for the day.
Where?
It's at the Boston Marriott Newton. It's 8:30 to 1:30. Danielle's going and Chris Hayden and Pete, what are gonna be Pete Milano's guests?
Nothing this evening other than asking for a motion to adjourn?
Second?
All in favor? Good night all.